How's it finding to get through now?
I'd like to call the common council, we have a meeting to order, please rise for your pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody, this is the regular scheduled meeting for the common council for May 2nd, 2016. We'll begin with the roll call members, please.
Councilman Abora?
Here.
Councilman Rudson?
Here.
Councilman Jeffrey?
Here.
Councilman Clement?
Here.
Councilman Fair?
Here.
Councilwoman Sauerman?
Here.
Councilwoman Dresk?
Here.
President, so we have seven members, full complement of the form tonight. First thing in the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting which took place on April 4th. What's the council's pleasure?
Motion, second.
Motion, second, you get that, Chris?
Who was the first?
Matt Clements. Any discussion, corrections, deletions, or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, all fair with it, by approval, by signifying with an eye?
Eye.
Against, the eye is having. Reading the agenda, are there any additional items to the next agenda? Okay, we'll do approval claims, petition, remonstrates, and public statements, special recognition by the mayor's office. We have a couple of those tonight, we're recognizing our local Girl Scout troop and employees at the mall. Reports, department heads, boards, or committees, we don't have any of those, we will add one, reports from the committees. Appointments, presentations, there's no unfinished business, and deferred business, ordinance 2016-04-03, this is an ordinance for flood hazard areas for the city of Crown Point. This was deferred from the April 4th meeting and will be retalked about tonight. There's no old business, our new business, request to approve a tie-in to city utilities, and this is located at 12887 Monroe Street. This received a favorable recommendation by the Board of Works on April 27th. Number two, a request for approval for secondary subdivision plan for Edgewater Phase 3, Block #2. This is northwest corner of 113th Avenue, Mississippi Street. This received and was approved by the Plan Commission meeting, subject to conditions. Resolution 2016-05-07R, a resolution pertaining to the annexation of certain real estate property to the city of Crown Point, more commonly called Copper Creek. Ordinance 2016-05-05, an ordinance annexing certain real estate to the city of Crown Points, again more commonly known as Copper Creek. Number five, ordinance 2016-05-06, an ordinance amending Article 5 Public Works of the Crown Point Municipal Code. Number six, ordinance 2016-05-07, ordinance amending the ordinance 2016-02-01, entitled ordinance for designated associations and subscriptions that may be paid from city funds for the year 2016. So that is our agenda for tonight's. And we'll go into the approval of claims.
I had the chance to review the claims, including a comprehensive review of all the credit card receipts. I believe these claims to be done in good faith and reflect the city's normal business. I recommend that we approve these claims.
We have a motion in the floor to approve the claims, do we have a second? We have a second, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, with signify by an eye?
Eye.
Against, the eye is having. Thank you, Chris. Next up is petition, remonstrates, and public statements. All we ask you to do is come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you can address the council.
Story, S-T-O-R-D-Y, James, 10,001 Matthews Street, Ithaca West Subdivision. I was here at the last council meeting and brought up the condition of Clark Road. I want to know why it's not on the agenda, nor the wheel tax, or anything about the new or proposed separation, building of a new fire department building, police department building, and whether or not in any of these situations, infrastructure or enlarging, renewing, rebuilding, building fire department, police department, if the tax increment financing would be used.
Are those all your topics?
Those are all my topics.
Clark Street, as we talked about before, is under consideration through engineering, and we'll look at the funding sources if we have room this year to do it, we will. That's one. Wheel tax is on the agenda, that is listed as number five, ordinance 2016-05-06, an ordinance amending Article 5 Public Works of the Crown Point Municipal Code, that is the wheel tax. Again, there's not a public hearing on that because it's just brought to the council to see if it's going to be open for a first reading and then be set for a public comment, public hearing, which if that's the case, would be at the next council meeting on June 6th, set for a public hearing, where the community can come and engage specifically on that one topic for that ordinance review. As far as the building and planning of a new police-fire station, we have a building committee established by the council here, going through due diligence. They have not made a recommendation for any funds to be expended for that erecting of a new building, or remodeling a current one. They're still going through that process, and once they have a recommendation, they will bring it to the public venue, it's just like this, to put up dialogue for get the community to be engaged, if that's the proper position to move forward with.
Thank you for your answers.
Thank you, thank you for coming tonight.
Hi, Bill Fetter, 517 East Clark Street. I'm here to speak about the wheel tax, I know it's a first reading, but I do want to have two comments. One, I'm not opposed or against it. I'm willing to spend more money and get my roads fixed, that's not a problem, but I think the way it's set up, you know, I had a chance to read the ordinance, but... The first thing is, when this tax is passed, I don't want 20% of the city council salary, the mayor's salary, chief of staff, clerk treasurer, deputy clerk, city engineer, city attorney, to be paid out of this fund. This fund should be only used to leverage money from the state of Indiana. And why we have to do that, because, you know, we have, that's how Deanna and Julie all pay us, that we have to leverage our tax dollars to get our tax dollars back. So, I just want to make that clear. My second point is, I think this is unfair to the owner-occupied citizens of Crown Point, residential. We're going to pay the majority of this tax. Those who have rental property are not going to pay this tax. Their tenants will, only if their car is registered at that address. And I don't know how the state's going to be able to lease that. I don't think it's going to happen. Secondly, the businesses who are out of town, who have corporate charters elsewhere, they're not going to pay that tax. The Nipscope trucks that drive up now in Indiana and Clark Street, they're not going to pay that tax. The bear trucks that drive through Bridgeport are not going to pay that tax. All the semi trucks, UPS trucks, that drive through our city, who deliver to all these businesses, are not going to pay that tax. I mean, let's face it, most businesses in Crown Point don't own vehicles. We have businesses. So, I don't know how we're going to equate everything there to make it fair to the residential homeowner with the business, this is, those big trucks are the ones that ruin our roads. It's not my little car. So, I'd like, after first reading, this goes back to the ordinance committee, but I would like to leave that point at that.
Mr. Federer, before you leave, let you know that by law, and whether it's by law or not, I think when you see the reading of the ordinance, 100% of the dollars being collected for this goes to roads, and goes to residential roads. We're not going to be, if we're in areas of TIF districts, or there's new development of commercial areas in a TIF, we're going to let them, or collect from those areas. We want this to go back into the subdivisions, we want to have that be the focus if this tool is passed. I don't disagree with you at all, the fact that it's difficult to try to figure out, did everybody included with this? That's where the, I would say that the state shouldn't mandate this right now, about just less than two-thirds of the counties already have this in Platte, Indiana. This should be more of a Hoosier legislation versus an individual community legislation, and make it fair and equitable across the board, so those things you just talked about would be caught in more of a stronger net and give fair, equitable exchange across the board. But again, this is the first time that, without getting into the discussion of the ordinance, because you'll have plenty of dialogue on this as we go in the night, in case you weren't going to stick around for the whole thing, I just wanted to give that out there, that's, you know, our number-one focus is to prove the infrastructure and leverage Crown Point's money, to want to keep it here, instead of going to another community to take other dollars that are available from the state and bring it back home versus being spent elsewhere.
I fully understand-
Yeah, I know you do, so I'm just-
About leveraging our tax dollars to get, it seems odd that I have to pay tax dollars to get my tax dollars back. I have four vehicles, so one's out of town because my daughter lives with me, but she's at school. So I have to pay a wheel tax on this vehicle that's not even in Crown Point, so-
I got you.
I appreciate everything, so, thank you.
Appreciate you for those comments, thanks, Bill.
Joseph Valenti, Iowa State District 1. Like to follow up on the previous gentleman's comments, also had to talk about the wheel tax. I am up.
Much to summarize your situation?
An individual, so I won't be redundant, and I'll keep this to about three minutes or less if I can. I didn't know anything about a wheel tax until I read about it, the paper, three weeks ago, when Portage started talking about it. And, that was interesting, I read Crown Point's going to consider it too. And I read last week, three board members from Portage Town Council, all Democrats, had a press conference and said, "They're not going to be behind this wheel tax, it's too short, timeframe, no due diligence, people aren't going to have their input, and it was just not enough time for proper discussion, thorough vetting of how this is going to work." That being said, I picked up the paper on Sunday, yesterday, I went to page 83, and then I did a little bit more research. And I really wanted to understand what this was all about. So, we're being told that this is a tax that must get passed to get matching funds from the state. So then I called Ed Soliday's office and spent some time talking with him. And he said, "I sponsored State Road Funding Bill 1001, and that's not true. You'll get matching funds, come up with expenditures. You can do that through your local income tax option, I don't know where that came from, 1.5%. Local unit, rainy day funds, general funds, or any other funds that we can come up with." So, we're intuitive people here, I know you guys are smart people, and I know there's ways that we can spend our money wisely, and we can look at our budgets closely, like citizens do here, and spend share pennies at home to make their household budgets stretch and get from week to week and month to month. We're also being told that the state says we have to charge $25 to $40 respectively for cars and SNRVs. I'll read the paper, and I'm finding out that that's not true. The law states that municipal wheel tax can go below $5 per vehicle. All we have to do is come up with an asset management plan, that's all the state requires on the SB 1001, if we choose to do it. Crown Point residents, I won't go steal them, so, all right? A lot of guys around here do, a lot of women do. We're dying here, the people that support the bills are dying, we're in big, big trouble. We're strapped, real wages for the average person have been stagnant for eight years, flat. But yet, when you couple that with everything that's going on, 1.5% county income tax, increased water, sewer, septic bills, increased trash recycling, Nipscope is going to jack us for another 7% electric hike coming soon, increased property taxes. For those people that don't see their assessor's property tax because it comes in the form of an escrow in their mortgage payment, the end of the year in December, they get their mortgage escrow adjustment form, they wonder why all of a sudden I'm in negative escrow, I got to pay more next year. Sometimes $500 check, if it's more than above that, just to get current again. And they look at this thing called Table 3, under property tax form from the assessor's office, and there's things at the bottom of that in Table 3, library fees, for a beautiful library that nobody can park at. School district, we voted for that. Little Calumet River Basin, special district taxes, whatever the heck those are. All that is up to hundreds more dollars, above and beyond where we used to. It's got to stop somewhere, we cannot continue to just be taxed and taxed and taxed without, especially at such short, short notice, by June. So the Portage mayor points over here and says, "Well, Mayor, your aunt's doing it, so Crown Point's doing it, so there." It's in the paper, it's his quote, not mine. So it must be good. So, I pick up the paper, and I'm just going to make four bullet points, I'll make them quick. Mayor Your Aunt sought to get an endorsement for the tax at last week's Board of Public Works and Safety Meeting. Board member Randy Paul-Matier called the wheel tax a maintenance fee for the roads, and said it will help people with good-paying jobs. I have no doubt it will create some jobs, and I have no doubt where his allegiance is at because the mayor hires him, and the mayor can fire him. He's not an elected official. This individual doesn't have an impeccable record when it comes to public safety. I'm not going to get into his personal life, but we all read the paper, and we know that he's been in some trouble with the law. Endangering the public, twice over the legal limit, it's a little bit embarrassing.
Do you want to move on? Personnel?
My word.
Yes. And I do respect all the other comments up to that point. Listen, before we go on, sir, hold on, before, let me address some of those comments that were made. Again, the state law does prescribe the amount that could be charged for passenger vehicles from $7.25 up to $25, and then up to $40 for commercial vehicles. We'd be doing a disservice to this community if we came in and did a bait and switch and passed something that was less advertised, and then could come back and do something more than we thought. The approach to this was to show by state law of what we could charge, okay? And so that way, there's no representation of what that dollar amount could be. You can always go back, it'd be different if we had a public hearing here, and we set it for one, and then we raised it, and nobody was here to see it, because everybody thought that the amount that was being advertised was acceptable. So we showed across the board exactly what the amount could be. That being said, you can apply, we're talking about Senate Bill 67, and you can apply other funds to it. But these are, if you do apply those funds, especially if it's a rainy day fund, or it's property tax funds, that are obligated to other areas of the city, whether it's through parks, police, fire, things of that nature, you can piecemeal something one year, but it won't give you consistency the next. So I think when you see what we're looking at here, that the wheel tax is one tax that you pay, if you did pay, if this board decides, the council decides to go forward with it, that's 100% of that money stays here for your roads, and your roads only, not shared with anybody else. And somebody else is going to take your dollars and give you more for your value on top of that. That's all it is. And we understand where this is coming from, so I just want to make sure we're clear in here that, you know, just because it says that's in the newspaper doesn't make it what it was set up here. We presented all the facts that were out there to make sure you knew exactly what your ceiling was, and you can always work it back from there. So there was no bait and switch being done in front of the community here, we want to be very transparent with this. House Bill 67 was just signed a couple of months ago, and given the opportunity for, it was passed, for us, for the very first time, for communities of 10,000 people or more, for the ability to consider this tool for yourself, because again, almost two-thirds of the counties have it, the other thirds do not, Lake County does not have it. And it's been in the books since 1980. So, this gives us our first opportunity to look at all the tools, because if you're somebody that lives on a road that needs to be repaired, that might not be on a list to be done in the next year, or the next four years. Your roads are not going to heal themselves, they're going to need additional money, and we'll discuss this when we get to that number five on the agenda, what those details are. I just want to make sure we continue to be transparent about this topic. That's her, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Your Aunt, members of the council. My name is Todd Plyborne, I'm a resident of the 1st District, I'm also one of three members, elected members, the Center Township Board, which represents over 32,000 residents, the Center Township. On behalf of the constituency that I represent, many of which are elderly and on a very strict, fixed-income, I stand in opposition to this proposed wheel tax. In a time of economic uncertainty, where many of our residents are experiencing financial hardship, and sometimes even having to choose between purchasing food or medication for the month, I believe it is misguided to levy additional tax on our citizens, no matter the amount. I fully understand and appreciate the extensive costs associated with building and maintaining our city's critical infrastructure, but I also believe that our elected leaders are extremely competent individuals who can surely work together to find an alternative to imposing yet another tax on the hard-working citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd.
My name's Tim Maluga, 1015 Crestview Street, it's down by the hospital. I oppose the wheel tax as well, again, we're being, you've heard it four or five times already, but we're being nickled and dined consistently, all the time, whether it's the federal, state, or local municipalities, we're constantly being deemed for everything. I understand that money may not be as great for you guys, because, you know, the cars are more efficient, we don't get as much money from the gas tax anymore, but I consider that political yahoo, I get it, but I have a budget, I have my own business, I have four kids under five, I have to maintain a budget every month. There's nowhere for me to go get more money, so I can't just tax my local citizens to pay for a new truck that our business needs, or new tools that our business needs. And I just think at $25 or $40, whatever the case may be, it's not a lot of money, but it is a lot of money. It's just, it's the principle that we're getting taxed, again, for something else, we got gas tax, excise tax, sales tax, tax for water, tax for this, tax for that. I think enough is enough, and I get it, our roads have to repair it, I want safe roads, I want my roads maintained. I know there's a lot of roads here, and I know the amount of money for it is exorbitant. Go through your budget, come here and show me your budget, show me every line item. Somebody may have to lose a job, somebody may have to cut a program, I get that. Those are hard decisions, raising taxes, that's an easy decision, there's no attachment to that. So, I mean, all these monies that are being pulled from my pocket consistently gets a little annoying, and like I said, I want safe roads, but what happens when the state doesn't give us this money anymore? How are we going to repair the roads then? What's the solution for that? We don't have the state to give us that money to match us anymore, so where are we getting that from? We got to get from somewhere, so is there another tax increase on the horizon? We just had the county one a couple of years ago, and that was disappointing. So what happens when this dries up, where does that money come from then? And how do we maintain a road? It's not like the roads just popped up all of a sudden, and they got bad, and they, all of a sudden, we got to fix all these roads. I get it's an annual maintenance, but shouldn't we be budgeting for that accordingly? And what does our budget look like? Are we in the red, are we in the black, we have a surplus, we have a deficit, how much debt do we have? So, I mean, all these questions should be considered when we start asking local citizens who pay enough taxes that already supply their budget, and we're going to ask for more money from us? I'm not a fan of it, it's not the amount, it's the principle. But thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing more about this.
Thanks, Tim.
Hi, my name is Greg Servan, my address is 9952 Matthews Street, I'm in the 2nd District. And yesterday's Times article, I read that in the article towards the middle or to the end, there is an asset management plan, I'd like to know what that consists of, and will residents have the opportunity to help craft this plan? I mean, I talked to somebody, some of the councilmen, and they didn't even know that Clark Road was in that bad a shape, so they actually drove down it, so, you know, we have it all embedded, if I want to craft a plan, it may not even know that this area's got really bad roads in it.
We're going to be able to discuss this on number five in detail, so if you want to stick around, we'll get into those details about the asset management plan. We have one in place now, it's going to get even tighter, it's going to show about where the 138 miles of roads in Crown Point are at. Eight years ago, we actually did videotape every road in the city of Crown Point, and through this, it's called the Pacer Program, that provides that data for us, and you're able to triage your roads, one being the worst, five being the best, and then you start picking those off each and every year until you rotate them through. Unfortunately, as we all know, as we live in the winters here, they've been very difficult the last few, four years, some of those roads expire faster than what it's considered it was, whether it's through frost and freeze and different applications, but we're going to discuss that under the topic number five.
Okay, you have it on the website, where it's accessible, the asset-
The asset management plan that will be coming out with this ordinance will be much more easier to read on the website when it's completed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Good evening, Linda Fraser, 1730 West 98 Place in Crown Point. Linda Frazier, 1730 West 98 Place in Crown Point. I just want you guys to think about the senior citizens who are retired and on fixed income. Like the gentleman said, we never get an increase in everything, everything, from food, medical, everything keeps going up. There's going to be an end to our pocketbook one of these days. I just wanted to let my councilmen know that I spoke with this week, that I came to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, we hear, what can we do for the seniors? You know, in our, we do give a senior discount on our water bills because we were able to do that through a funding source to make that happen. The state law does not allow us to pick and choose on how the funding for the wheel tax goes. There's no age restrictions, there's no mileage restrictions, there's no things like that. It's a, it's a pretty uniformed blankets approach to that law. So we can't, you know, if you drive 10 miles, you drive 100,000 miles in a year, the tax itself, based on the statute that's being talked about, that opens up this door for discussion, is uniform across the board. Just want to make sure everybody knows that. We try to help when we can. This council's done that in the past. And if there was a provision that would allow for mileage reductions in paying, we would consider that. The law doesn't provide that. Also, just, again, this is public comment, open section here. If you just recently received your tax bill, I'm sure we just got that in the mail, it shows about the different things and it was discussed earlier where was that? If you did notice in the city of Crown Point, now, we only control the city of Crown Point. We don't control the schools, we don't control the library, we don't control the county, we don't control the township. Only this body control is the incorporation of the city itself. If you notice on our percentage, what we collect, our percentage has gone down. We are tightening the things we can, okay? We're a growing community. We have things that we've got to address. But to think that this thing's a train out of control and we're just spending money left and right as we're printing it, that's not the case. We have checks and balances in place. We present ideas. And over the eight years, and then we have some newer council people on this panel now, you can look at the history of this city. We've been very, very frugal with our dollars. We have, we'll never apologize for your taxes going up. And the reason I say that is because it's a tax cap. If your house is worth more, you'll pay more. I think we'd have a line out the door if your house was going the other way and not being worth more than it was tomorrow than it is today. That's a huge scorecard that we look at each and every day as a job that we're doing. So if you go back over the last many years and the value of your home, where it's at today and where it's going to go, if it's trending up and you pay more, and it is, because we see the appraisals all the time, we see the values of the real estate market share that's going out there. Crown Point is a rising community of value. And there's a lot of different things that play that part. Great schools, low crime rate, good services, and your infrastructure. So again, not to get in the soapbox here because we'll open this thing up, you know, we won't have a public hearing on this tonight, but we're definitely taking your value, what you're saying here tonight, and hopefully you'll stick around because you'll hear great dialogue by the seven members up here and some of the staffs who prepare documents to answer some of these questions you might have. And I appreciate the fact that you're here to hear it firsthand, okay? The newspapers do it the best they can to get the information out there. They're limiting the space they can put print in there. But you either want to be in here seeing it live, two, watching it home on TV, and getting engaged with your council people is the strength of our community. And I appreciate the public comments we had on that topic tonight so far.
I would like to oppose the wheel tax.
Sir, we need your name and address, sir.
Okay. Martin Ryan. I live at 1042 Freedom Circle South, Crown Point, Indiana. It's in the White Hawk. The reason why I oppose it is because, being a senior, we have so much that we are paying out right now, and it's getting tougher. It's getting harder for us to make ends meet. And, you know, we have medical bills. And I'm telling you, it's getting worse. Because my wife was on certain medication. Now they tell us $230 for one and $230 for the other. That's $460 a month that we have to pay out. You know? There's a lot of things happening. And it's because of Obamacare, he doesn't want to pay for stuff. So I'm just saying that the seniors are hurting. And I would like to see something done other than this tax. I really would. I appreciate it, you know? I just can't see it. And I don't understand why these roads are in this bad of a condition, you know? I mean, I know you're saying, but look at, like, we go out of the White Hawks subdivision and you cross Clark Street and you're going down 104th, and they tell us that's county road, you know? Now, the county might come back and say, well, for us to fix that, we're going to tax you too now, you know? How come those roads aren't in the best?
We'll be addressing that later tonight about making sure you're not double taxed. So, I mean, there's a conversation with that, too.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I know Senator Emire is here in the audience as well. Senator, is this the time you want to take to address this or you want to wait until the topic of section five?
Whatever you want me to do, Mayor. Whatever the council wants you to do, you want me to do.
If you want to come forward and address this, because I mean, I don't know if a lot of people are going to stick around to hear the dialogue, they may leave. I'm sure once the Girl Scouts get their awards, I don't know if they're going to stick around to hear about the wheel tax, but they'd love to be able to see the senator that represents the Minnesota.
Glad to be here. Mayor called me Friday since the legislation came from this session to this session right at the end. I think one of the things, I think the wheel tax language is in House Bill 1001. I don't believe it's in Senate Bill 67. It was in the original House Bill. Original House Bill 1001 was the 4% increase in the gasoline tax, the $1 cigarette tax, and the wheel tax issue, and the surplus issue, the reserve issue. But compromise was made, Senate Bill 67 came from our side, trying to deal with some of our local issues on local roads and trying to find some funding inside our circle of money that was there, instead of trying to look at raising any kind of fee during a non-budget year. So they both vetted themselves in the House and the Senate. And so the compromise was, in 1001, was to eliminate the 4% gasoline tax, the dollar cigarette tax was taken out. The wheel tax language was left in, maybe looking at using some of the reserve money that's in reserve in the state was in. And that was an issue, the look at a lot of the local roads, some of the local roads and more on the state level there. And then Senate Bill 67 was a local issue on the income tax issue. What it was that the state always holds back 50% of the income tax revenue, we dropped that down to 13% we're holding now in revenue. Why we're holding 50, I never knew that, and we're holding that. So there, there's a pot of money down there that we were holding that we probably shouldn't have, and that's coming back to the locals now. I think it's bringing back about $38 million to Lake County totally, to be divided up between cities and towns and county. So that's where the legislation went last session. The wheel tax language stayed in. I think some of the things we talked about Friday was a double taxation issue that might happen. You know, Lake County does not have a wheel tax, but there's, I think there's over 60 counties that do. I don't know, I mean, those counties that are, or city or town inside those counties looking to do a wheel tax on top of what they have, I don't, I haven't heard that, but I'm not saying it can't be done because they're two separate issues right now. And we talked about that Friday and them being two separate issues. Lake County tried to do a wheel tax in 2011, my first year in the council. It failed 4 to 3 that year. It was going to generate about $10 million for the county, $8 million going to cities and municipalities and towns, and $2 million going to the incorporated area of the county. It failed that night. I think one of the reasons it failed at that particular point was that there wasn't too many elected officials there that night in cities or towns. It was pretty much, and I don't know if they didn't know about it, or it was a special night meeting that our council president called. Who was there that night was a lot of trucking firms that were against it, a lot of union representatives was there looking for jobs or for it, and the council. And that was about it. And it failed 4 to 3 that night because it seemed like there wasn't enough community backing from cities and towns to move forward on. So as time went, and now that the capture and placement of things come into place, it starts servicing again about finding extra revenue. And this was a portion that Senate Bill 67 were part of. And 101, the House Bill 101 compromise was to leave that in there. So it's there for the usage. I think it's going to be talked about, and I assume that the council's going to talk about, what if the county does enact the county wheel tax? And you have one. What's going to happen? At that point, you're going to have some double taxation. And some of the idea was, well, it's going to create more revenue. No, it's going to create a double taxation issue and has to be looked at. So I'm sure that other senators are getting that dialogue from back home on that same thing, especially with counties that already have the wheel tax. Because it's, we had it originally here for a population of 20,000 or more, and we dropped that to 10,000 because there's a lot of senate districts that didn't have a city or town in their district that were 20,000. In my district, Newton and Benton County don't have a city 10,000. So those counties are both out of doing anything in Senate City for a town for a wheel tax. So it kind of left it open to maybe the bigger counties that weren't doing a wheel tax, giving their local communities an option if they wanted to, if they deemed it necessary to create a tax. And the only thing about the tax that the mayor's built out specifically is it can't go anywhere else, it can't be used for other things. Even if you put it in a rainy day fund, when it comes out, it's supposed to be used for paving and roads and bridges and that type of stuff. So it's designated for that area. It's just got to decide locally whether you think that you need that or not. One reason, just real quick, because a lot of people want to talk to you tonight, that I pushed back on Senate Bill 1001 was, we're running a surplus and it's stayed pretty constant, gaining a little bit. And it's a non-budget year. I could not see raising taxes in a non-budget year. Even it was, it was the obvious time to do the gasoline tax, the gasoline was getting some, going down so much. It was the obvious time to do it. But still, you're raising taxes, the cigarette tax, the dollar tax, it's a pretty big hit for people that smoke, older people that smoked all their life and they still smoke, and it's a pretty big hit for them. So I think it was, it was good compromise in the House and Senate to wait till next year. And there's going to be a funding mechanism change in transportation next year. That's probably the number one thing, is infrastructure, next year's budget, for the next two-year budget is to find some alternate funding for roads and bridges. Because the gasoline tax is not keeping up. And I saw raising it 4 cents this year, raise another 4 cents three or four years down the line. There's some other kind of formula that has to be used to keep roads up. Gasoline tax can be part of it. We have to do more with the sales tax in there, but there's going to be a lot of conversation next session of where we're going to come up with the extra funding for roads because gasoline tax can continuously fall short for us. So that's where it's at and the issue is, as far as I'm concerned, we had that conversation. I take that, you know, one thing I did today when I talked to legislative services after our dialogue Friday was, I asked them to draft some legislation for me that says if a county has a wheel tax and the city or a town has it, then they're exempt from that county tax. They can't be double taxed. So you already got your money because you're part of that county formula anyhow. So this would take you out of that county form that the county gets. So it's a big piece of legislation. I don't know what kind of backing it may have or not have, but anybody in any city or town that already has a wheel tax, if the county has one, then they should be exempted out there, residents, and that should stay there. And the county's going to have to, because the county doesn't keep what Crown Point gets anyhow, that's given to Crown Point, through that county tax that's here now. That's why, you know, other $10 million if the county ever did it three years ago, $8 million was going to go to cities and towns. They're going to get their funding. I'm looking at that issue, the mayor brought that up Friday, you're looking at double taxation issue. It's a local issue that generates some money for your roads and it will give you ability to, and one gentleman, he had these good points about matching money, it's all your money, it's all taxpayer money, whatever you're matching, but some of it's federal money you might be able to match with. It's going to help if it's everybody's money in the country, they need money to let, it's not local money. So some of the tax money there would be, some of the federal money you can maybe leverage in with the match. So that's, that's my thing tonight, and I want, appreciate the mayor calling and asking me to come up and explain a little bit on the Senate side, but there's definitely going to be some, some really good discussion next session on the formula. And it's going to change, and it's going to be up to residents, the people like yourself and me and council people to weigh in on it, see what you think locally, see what you think might work better than what we've got now, and come up with the extra money that we need. Because the biggest problem is that the cost of doing a mile of roads keeps going up every year. And the cost of putting a bridge, it keeps going up every year. Until those prices stop, you just, you just can't keep up with it. And that's kind of where we're at.
Senator, I appreciate you being here at this time. Are you able to stick around for a little bit?
I'm going to stick around for a little bit.
Okay. I appreciate your public comments. Thank you, Senator. Any other comments from the public? Once, twice? We'll, absolutely. We'll close the public comments section and we'll go right into special recognition. And we're going to immediately go right to the Girl Scouts who have been very, very patient here. They should probably get a badge for government tonight as well. So if we can go ahead and have all the girls come forward, please, and have their troop leader come forward. Kara, I appreciate her in the audience as well, and... Okay, come on up here, so you guys have got TV.
They have a badge for government, actually.
Very good. Well, we're here tonight because we want to recognize one of our local troops here. And this is troop number 30203. And they're a big part of doing a lot of different things in the community. Now, we all recognize the Girl Scouts for cookies, right? And we've all had them, we've all enjoyed them, okay? That's a big part of their fundraising efforts. But with that, you know, they help organize several other things. They organize Operation Christmas Child Event, which requires items that fills nearly 900 Christmas packages for needy children across the world. Those packages include books, toys, stuffed animals, strands, toothbrushes, and many, many more. They help supply the drive for Lake County Animal Shelter. They help deliver full trucks of blankets, towels, cleaning supplies, and laundry detergents. They help make and purchase dog treats, dog and cat food, and animal toys. They created and donated dozens of Easter baskets for foster kids at many different organizations. They organized a holiday get-together for residents at the Franciscan Nursing Home. They spend a day there decorating rooms, caroling, spending time with the residents. They also give presents to residents. They help disability awareness meetings. They discuss and encourage inclusion of all the children, discuss ways to help disabled children in the community. They organize random acts of kindness, cookie drives, approximately about 150 boxes of donated cookies go to random citizens in Crown Point to show their act of kindness. They help with the Girl, Air and Girl Scouts, and they've helped with the 2016 St. Patty's Day Parade. The lists go on and on. So you buy cookies from them, this is not a sales pitch for cookies, but I'm sure they'll do that on their own. But they take that good money that they raised from those cookies and they put it out there and they put it to good use. And tonight, we wanted to recognize the troop for doing those good deeds. I know the chief, you wanted to say a few words because I know you, just from the public safety aspect, the random acts of kindness that were done impacted the public safety side.
They did, yeah, actually for us and the fire department. They take very good care of us a couple of times a year. We go to the school and they make up wonderful baskets for each, not just for the department, but for each individual employee, which, between fire and police, that's a lot of baskets, that's a lot of work. So they definitely take very good care of us.
Again, girls, I think you would agree in this statement that the ability to pull together and do the things you do, you have to have a good leader, correct? So you have an excellent leader right here, Kara, correct? So let's, let's throw... We do have a certificate to give to each one of the girls here tonight for, again, just one of our ways to say thank you for the things you do to make Crown Point great and all these things that you've listed out here. And so I don't want to mispronounce any of these names because they deserve the proper recognition. So if you can go ahead and...
Where is their name?
This one's for you.
Oh, okay.
You're the Girl Scout troop. Let you, okay? And we'll put that at the bottom, but then...
Okay, Emily Valanda? Yeah, we'll get a picture real quick. Yeah, we'll get a picture real quick. Amaya Chandler? Ava Braker? Briada Hewland? Bella Keller? Isabella Gifford? Anna Bostelman? Meredith Mendoza? And Abby Lee Puttamake it tonight.
All right. This is our group here, so we're going to do this. We'll keep the tall ones in the back, the ones not so tall just yet come forward, okay? And then we're going to go ahead and do a picture here, okay?
Let's get the mayor back.
I'll get it aside. Everybody say cheers.
Okay, very good.
Yeah? Sam, do we have them all? Okay.
Thank you.
Girls, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Okay, we're also going to do the May 2016 Employees of the Month, and I'd like to have Commander Len Halola come forward, Street Superstar James Delaime come forward, Bill Smith come forward, please. These three gentlemen here, we had a situation one night where unfortunately, somebody who probably shouldn't be looking business in Crown Point was doing some destruction in our community, and we needed some help to assist on putting back a couple doors and things of that nature of a house. Again, this isn't typically the nature of the police department and/or the public works to do this work, but Commander Halola, who was in the detective bureau for many, many years, I won't just leave it at that, so he's dedicated his community, all these gentlemen have dedicated many years to the city of Crown Point. But they do it by themselves because the house itself needed to be repaired and put back for the safety and concerns of the personal property that was being contained inside. So Commander Halola got ahold of Mr. Delaime, Mr. Smith's here, and they brought him in, and these guys on their own, at no cost to the city, okay, didn't put an overtime sheet in afterwards, just went out and made sure they contacted the right people, got the right materials, and did the work themselves to board up and make sure the house was secure. And that's the difference making we have in our community because they could have just easily ended their job as they get paid for and turned it over to somebody else to do, but they made sure that all the way through, from the time they made contact with that homeowner until they made contact with the house, they made sure it was secure going forward, and that is exactly why it makes our employees great for the city of Crown Point. So I'll be the first one that will always be fighting for these employees and not looking to let them off because they go beyond the duties of what is the expectations of most communities, and that's what makes our community great. So if you can give me a round of applause for these three gentlemen. I think you either want to initiate this to start off with, to get these two gentlemen involved, just want to make a few comments?
Yeah, I think these two gentlemen really reflect the spirit of our employees and the community involvement and the way we feel about our community. It gave me great personal satisfaction when they came out to know that that 70-some-year-old woman's house was going to be secure for the night, and she had that peace of mind. So I really owe them a great debt of gratitude in responding to Michael Arthur Allen, and I appreciate their work.
Thank you.
Well done.
The work they did at the house speaks for themselves. So again, this emphasizes exactly why we have this award, because again, each and every day that our men and women who work for the city of Crown Point come to do their jobs, they do it at a level that's as good as you, as those taxpayers that are here tonight and watching at home, that you've got employees that really care beyond the scope of what a job description says. So that being said, congratulations on your work tonight. Well deserved.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to reports of department heads, boards, and committees, and I'll immediately go to Greg Falkowski, Chief of Staff, and any of the department heads.
No, ma'am.
I don't believe we had anything from the boards. I know we have a committee report, but I think we're going to wait until item number five to get your update on that. Is that appropriate?
Sure.
Okay. All right, we have no appointments, no presentation, no unfinished business, and we'll go right to deferred business. This is Orders 2016-0403, Orders for the Flood Hazard Areas for the City of Crown Point. This was deferred from the April 4 meeting, and I believe they gave the council just a little bit more time to go ahead and review that document for discussion tonight. So I will bring this back to the council and open it up for discussions or any questions that you may have of the city attorney.
My biggest question on that, Mayor, if I may go, it was a change in the wording that gave, under the definition of hardship, gave the final say for granting hardship to the VZA, which had formerly been the purview of the city council. And I think that was based on a state template of the, was there a reason for that change in the ordinance?
Probably the person that drafted the ordinance out of state for that department was unaware of Lake County, St. Joseph County in particular, so we can make that change. VZA though is, you know, our VZA is pretty good, but if you want the county council to be the final decider of the hardship, we will do that.
Yeah, and that is not any kind of a slur to our good VZA, but I think for hardship cases to request from their elected officials is a little different from appointed officials, which the VCA is a mix and we're not. So that would be my only suggestion, that it would remain the same wording as it was before as far as the final say.
I can make that change.
Being the city council at least. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the council on that amendment?
My only question was on Article 4, Section A. County Council of the City of Crown Point appoints the Director of Planning and Building to administer and implement provisions of this ordinance, and here I refer to as the floodplain administrator. I'm not detailed enough in that each department, but in the past, I've always dealt with engineering with flooding, so I didn't know the knowledge base is more in the engineering, and I think that was a change too, so that...
That was discussed in committee, I think, with the chair.
Mr. Clemmons, do you want to bring up, because this was discussed at the ordinance committee, if you want to chime in on this ordinance, about the reason why we, the planning person?
Say that again, didn't hear the last part.
Okay, we brought this up in the ordinance committee on the change for the flood hazard areas and listed the planning administrator as the person to review the floodplains. It just was discussed, you want to bring it back to...
As far as I can tell with the committee, we didn't have a problem with that. We looked at it, and we thought that was a good idea because he's here, and you're not here sometimes, so we thought that it was appropriate, in front of the information we had.
And I also believe that at the time, because Mr. Nichols, is this something that has been consistent with the policies of the past?
It has. Engineering has always been the recipient of these documents, because that's who the state agency sends it to, and then engineering forward, among, from what I viewed to me, for legality, the technical aspects of it, as Will points out, the legal aspects regarding particularity Star County, St. Joseph County, are not reflected in the ordinance. And I have no problem in doing whatever the council would want regarding this ordinance, so it's totally up to them. I suppose it's a policy call, but Anthony is available all the time, and he's right on the same floor as engineering, presently, so I believe it was consensus of the committee that that's who they want, Mr. Schröder, as the administrator.
And I think it was some consistency with that as well, I believe. I don't think it was a change here because I think also we talked about at the time that when the council has had this in each area to review, you had a former planner with the city of Crown Point, Kirk Graves, who probably had more years than combined by anybody that sat in the engineering scene for consistency of information and being involved with the planning commission and other various boards and VZAs where sometimes the engineer doesn't necessarily attend the VZA meetings, where you have a consistent face and a member that can communicate that information back to the council. And again, you know, the council at the end of the day is going to be having the final say, especially on the hardship.
I just was concerned when they talk flood, water, I always think more engineering, and that's my concern, is that, you know, nothing with planning, and I'm just looking to see who's got the specialty knowledge in strictly looking at water, that's it. Anything else, and this is relating to flooding, which I think flooding is extremely complicated in water, and that always makes me think of more engineering floodplain photography. So that's why I was just wondering why that wasn't going to the engineer for that final decision versus planning, that's all.
If I may, what was discussed at ordinance committee on this? This was, historically, it's been the Director of Planning and Building, because like you said, Kirk Graves, you know, was wealth of knowledge in all aspects of what's going on in the city. We spoke kind of at length at this, that the proper channel, you know, whether it would be, is it engineering that truly needs to look at each specific case, or is it planning and engineering that needs to look at it? That probably a good direction might be for it to go through the Chief of Staff. The Chief of Staff disseminated it down to whatever proper, whether it be multiple department heads, individual department heads, and that was, I believe, what we recommended at...
I believe so, yes.
At ordinance committee.
That is correct, you can recall that, yeah.
In the past, before we implemented GIS system, the planning office held all the floodplain maps for the city, so that's why it was through the planning department and the VZA, since we have a computerized system that tells them our GIS now.
That is correct, and I'd like to bring up that, I think Chris would concur, that he can disseminate to the staff below him for the proper determination, whether it's through planning or engineering, and get the answer back.
And that's why I was scrambling here, because I thought we had to get down Chief of Staff.
It was a long meeting that night, so, but I think we were the, I think the most part of the topic of that meeting, of this topic, was the St. Joe and Lake County Division of the boilerplate document that was disseminated, because they didn't realize that two counties out of 92, you know, have it one way and then Lake County, St. Joe have it another. So if that, does that make the document, if the changes are the Chief of Staff and the county council is the hardship, make the document applicable for the council?
Yes.
May I take a motion to approve the ordinance as amended? And I'll prepare the, if the vote is favorable, I'll prepare the amended ordinance for the clerks' office to have it.
So read them title only, all over?
I'll make a motion to read in title only and to hold over for second reading, Ordinance Number 2016-0403, for flood hazard areas with the amendments mentioned for Chief of Staff in place of...
Planner?
Building, planning.
Floodplain administrator.
Floodplain administrator to be the Chief of Staff in the city of Crown Point, and also for the city council to have final say on hardship cases.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
A second.
Chris, did you get that?
Got it.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all fair with an eye?
Aye.
Yes? The ayes have it. And Mr. Nichols, how's that document prepared for you, as for these units, 16 minutes? Thank you. Okay, there is no old business, new business. A request to approve to tie into city utilities at 12887 Monroe Street. This received a favorable unanimous recommendation by the Board of Works on April 27, 2016, and the council's here is to affirm the decision at the Board of Works, and is anybody here representing the petitioner?
Yeah.
Just state your full name and address for the record, please.
David Hubinger, 12887 Monroe Street.
Thank you. And we'll immediately go to the staff. Guys, you want to give the council a quick overlay of what is being proposed?
Dave's request is about 150 plus water lines, comes off of 129th Street, and he is on the ground, about 150 feet, and he's aware of all the requirements that have to be modified in that situation. He's not asked to pursue at this time. He's going to put it shut off by a hydrant, so that he can just run through the line that goes from where he's tying into our line to his house, the seats and how it's controlled. This, that forest, I went at the corner of Forest View and...
Northwood.
Northwood. Sorry. City engineering, a real common...
Thank you, Bill. I will bring it back to council to give the legal description of what took place at the meeting.
Mr. Hubinger, you'll recall this, the last meeting, I asked you if you had any objection to the imposition of the 25% surtax based upon your current outside city. You agreed to that. And also, I asked you if the city chose to add it, you'd weigh your right to remonstrate against the annexation. And I believe the mayor brought up the fact that all costs entailed with your connections are big, are on you, am I right?
Okay. I'll bring it back to the council.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, we'll all open for discussion to the council. Any discussion to the petitioner or the staff or legal?
You don't want to tie into our sewers, but just the water separate?
I don't know if that's possible at this point. Sewer's about 350 feet of length.
Right.
It's a distance away.
Looked into that briefly, but I didn't know that was possible.
I don't know if the elevations would work out for where he's at low and the sand drains and the pipe.
But if it's possible, I consider that so. Any other questions, discussion, or discussion? Hearing none, all fair with an eye?
Aye.
Yes? The ayes have it. So you've been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy the water, it's good. Next up is request and approval for the secondary subdivision plat at Edgewater Phase 3, Block 2. This is the northwest corner of 113th Avenue and Mississippi Street. This was approved at the planning commission meeting, subject to conditions. Are there anybody here representing the petitioner?
No, Fonda Evansen, 10147 Media Street in Midwater. I just have a question about that, I just have to pay here for Girl Scouts. What exactly is it that they're wanting to do, or what part of that is this?
We'll open up, because it's, rather than rules, we don't open it, but you'll hear from staff, so, okay. We'll immediately go to staff, and Anthony can explain to the council, and he'll do it in such a fashion that the public will hear as well, so.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Petition 1613, Edgewater subdivision, Phase 3, Block 2, secondary subdivision was approved by the planning commission, subject to several conditions. Private road, Vermont Circle, be installed to city specifications and all design standards outlined by city code and the engineering department. Homeowners to be responsible for all private roads and costs. Private road to be dedicated to the public if at all possible, based on engineering and public works approval. public works approval. Vermont Circle will be constructed as a typical city street curb to curb, however, the right-of-way width was reduced from sixty feet to fifty feet to allow for the I sixty-five landscape buffer. This reduction does not allow public works to bring the appropriate amount of room for efficient effect of snow removal. Road require other time and effort to keep it clear and they have requested that all ownership and maintenance be granted to the Edgewater property owners association. The city is requesting that Vermont Circle be approved and the private road be owned and maintained by the Edgewater Property Association.
Thank you. And I'll bring it back to the council and I'll first open it up to the members of the council that sit in the planning commission that maybe can bring in additional comments as you were part of the process. So, Laura?
There was a lot of discussion on this and we had been kind of led to believe that it could be taken into city inventory. The concern was that a private road usually indicates two or three or four houses that are kind of off themselves. This is forty-four units, Mr. Schleter. So this is a little more controversial just in terms of it puts a lot of residents in a situation where if the POA were to not be in place or were to fail in any way, the city is not willing to take the city, or take the street into inventory under the current circumstances and yet the equivalent was granted for the smaller road in order to get the I sixty-five buffer. It was a unique piece of property. I actually thought that it was going to be able to take, go into inventory and so it concerns me that it's not, that it may have played my vote different on my planning commission. And not, we just, like the wording is, if at all possible, so that just for safety and if anything were to happen to POA, then who's responsible for the street? And there have been some issues that Mr. Jeffries can probably speak a little more to some of the unique issues at that particular subdivision. It's changed hands.
Well, I mean, we all know what happened with that part. You know, it was stagnant forever. Ryland has came back in, which is now merged with CalAtlantic. But this thing was plotted originally as a private road around the town home, the condominiums, around the pond. It doesn't meet by ordinance our requirement of the sixty-foot right-of-way, it meets fifty-foot. Those are also maintenance-free townhomes, so they will have landscaping, mowing, snowplowing, all provided as part of their homeowners association fee. So even speaking with the representative from CalAtlantic, they will have, I mean, and quite frankly, that would be way on the back burner as far as our snow removal process goes to make it around that back road of the subdivision. And he even spoke to the fact that the road will be built to city standard as far as construction-wise. But they will have their own plowing service in there already, doing all of the driveways, all the sidewalks. And so as they're bringing out in that one big circle, they're bringing everything out into the road, there's not a good spot to actually put it. It has to then be carried out, so it would be a little bit of a challenge for the city to handle what they're trying to do while the private company is also handling all of the driveways in that back cul-de-sac or circle drive area. So, I mean, that was initially plotted, private. I agree with Laura, I mean, there's, there are some issues with private quote-unquote roads and subdivisions, you know, we've seen in a couple of their developments. But I guess the failsafe is it's being, it's being constructed to city standards. You know, it doesn't meet our requirements and furthermore, I think at the end of the day, the snow removal issue probably outweighs the fact of trying to supersede our ordinance with a fifty-foot right-of-way and say, okay, we're going to go ahead and assume it. You know, if something happens to that POA ten years down the road, that's a bridge we'll have to cross at that point. But now, you know, it's something that.
So when, when that road, as we had the wheel tax conversation, you know, in fifteen years, when that road fails because it will have problems, so then you're saying the POA is responsible for the repair of that road?
Yes.
Is that even realistic?
Sounds pretty good.
Okay, so.
They would be responsible.
I mean, they collect their monthly POA with a reserve.
Waterford was the same way. We did take, perfect example of that was, we actually did actually take Waterford's roads in, but not until they were able to bring their newest and latest roads up to city specs and turn over a brand-new set of roads to the city of Crown Point and the homeowners association took down the debt to do that before it was conveyed back to the city. So that would be probably the same formula before the city would look at to take this in, is down the road if something would change and they wanted to give that right-up and have us repair, they would give us a brand-new road from day one to other one before we don't take it in fifteen-year road and say now we're responsible for the, for the maintenance of it.
But was Edgewater a sixty-foot width and this is fifty? So is that a problem even taking it in ever because it doesn't meet the spec? So I mean, is that something, I mean, the other roads we've done, they met the width, but this one doesn't?
There's always some challenges in any of these homeowners associations. Prairie View's the same way that we'll be addressing here because they're getting ready to redo their roads and see if the city wants to be able to take those in. Waterford was, when we actually had them do the roads and take it in, we actually approved some of the curb cuts in there for the fire chief to have, Zaparasis getting there so some of the circles were, were expanded, but the roadways themselves. So there's, there's many different negotiations as you get to that point. But as we bring up the wheel tax and you bring up residents, you know, with a hundred and thirty-eight miles of roads in there, it's great to be able to, to have somebody want to build a road, take care of themselves and be able to do it themselves, but they certainly wouldn't be exempt from, if this council decides to put in some type of tax on vehicle, they'd be subject to that as well, but they wouldn't go for the road, they'd go for somebody else's roads. But that's, that's a little topic by itself, but, but yeah, that's, that's usually how it's been played, that's how it's been going over the last eight years, that before we inverter took another road in, it's been on a private site, they had to bring it up to that level that day, not just give us the hand-me-down.
Well, I know that that whole subdivision was in a crisis, so I think when the new company took over, it was truly a relief for those homeowners to get value in their property. So I think there was a reason for letting them have that leeway of fifty feet because I think it was a real positive boost to those current homeowners.
And again, typically we don't open up for public comment, but I think if.
If I may to say, we don't have a homeowners association, so, and I haven't been contacted from the new development about it, so as of right now.
That would be, that would be a separate one themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just the units that would be on this private road would be, would be the homeowners association.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's, one of the reasons I wanted to bring it up was to just make that public.
Yeah.
You know, if I move into a community and there's a road, I assume that that's going to be maintained by my municipality or my town or my whatever. It might not be completely clear to a new homeowner, if this road fails, it's my responsibility. You know, and I just want to say that out loud, that if this is a private road, it's private and the city is not responsible for it unless some kind of negotiations take place. And there are positives and negatives to that, so.
I mean, we, we had that situation in Waterford, you know, I think the reason why this was brought up besides the roads themselves in the city was, you know, if it became private, you know, they felt like they weren't getting the brush service, they weren't getting different things that were.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're like, wait a minute, you're, you're part of the community service bill, you should get that. And that's how that discussion came up and stuff, just because it's private doesn't mean we can't provide other, I mean, we would set a fire truck on that street, we would set a police car on the street.
Yes, yes.
We're going to pick your brush up. I mean, that's part of the community, but now the maintenance of the road, whether it's how it's being plowed, that's done because they've made those agreements through, you know, a document that's, you know, in front of you tonight to memorialize, to make sure that's recorded.
And we didn't ask for the road to only be fifty feet. It was requested that it be there and because of that, it cannot be taken into city inventory. But it is going to be built well according to city specs, it's just not a large enough right-of-way for us to take in. Just want to be clear on that.
I agree with that. I'm just afraid that down the road, a new homeowner is going to come in and I don't understand any of that. And we're going to get thousands and thousands of calls upon, you know, what if the POA falls through? And what if snow is not taken care of? Everybody's going to come right at us. I don't agree with it being a private road.
But I don't know that we have the option because it doesn't meet the spec, so it's not our decision to try to bring it in.
I know, like she said, we went over and over and over with that in the last planning commission meeting.
Yeah.
Well, we're here tonight to affirm or what's the action, David? The council has the ability to affirm the decision from time to time, correct?
Right.
So what's the council's pleasure?
And let me just ask one question. So there's no way that it can become sixty feet below it's already in and?
There's no room.
There's no, there's no room.
It's been planned anyway.
Okay.
And it was planned a long time ago.
Long time ago.
And that's.
Because it's been here and.
Yeah.
Wow.
Thirty years, long time ago.
I would actually move to approve the request for the secondary subdivision plat at Edgewater Phase Three, Block Two.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all favor sent if I buy an aye?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it.
Mayor, if I may, if you guys, you guys have my phone number, right?
Thanks, sir.
If you give me a call tomorrow, this week sometime, I can put you in touch with the right people because there is a set of covenants and restrictions when Ryland took over. You guys were at the meeting at the library, right?
Yeah.
And Omar talked about that, about you wouldn't legally be bound to join that, but they would welcome everybody to be part of that HOA. So if you give me a call, I can get you in touch with us.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is resolution two thousand and sixteen oh five oh seven R and resolution pertaining to the annexation of certain real estate to the city of Crown Point, Copper Creek. And anybody here representing the petitioner? Jack?
Jack Hulse, one one zero six five Suite D Broadway, Crown Point. DVG is the civil consultant for MCFAS for developer of Copper Creek.
Okay, and Anthony, we'll go right to staff on this. Do you have some comments on this?
I just got.
Yeah, we'll start with the annexation, so we'll let.
Unless Anthony wants.
I'll let you head the question.
This is a resolution pertaining to the annexation of the backyards of these lots that are located in Copper Creek. And we had looked at it and the ordinance for annexation, or petition for annexation was presented, so looking at the evidence that was presented regarding the impact of the taking into the city's inventory by annexation, the backyards of these homes, the fiscal impact was none and the impact on city services was none. The preparation of a full-scale, full-blown fiscal plan to be submitted and writing along with this resolution would have cost a lot of money. The reason for the resolution is to advise the council and the public that there is no reason for it. And under provisions of the home rule, this resolution takes care of that by saying we're already providing the city services and we will continue to provide them. So would ask that resolution two thousand and sixteen oh five oh seven dash R be approved as written.
And make a motion to approve resolution number two thousand and sixteen oh five oh seven R.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor sent if I buy an aye?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Ordinance two thousand and sixteen oh five oh five, orders annexing certain real estate to the city of Crown Point, Copper Creek. Mr. Nichols, you want to talk pertaining to the ordinance now?
This is the ordinance that is a result, that results from the filing of the petition and the adoption of the resolution. And this ordinance brings the, once again, the backyards of these lots in Copper back into the city. And I would recommend passage of two thousand and sixteen oh five oh five.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council.
I move to propose, to approve ordinance number two thousand and sixteen oh five oh five.
Read in title only?
Read in title only.
All over, secondary?
All over the secondary.
Yes. We have a motion, we have a second?
A second.
We have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all favor sent if I buy an aye?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it.
There would be no reason not to give this.
To suspend the law.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Okay.
We have a motion to suspend by an Andrew. And it was a tie as we carry Laura.
Mrs. Gress, can you have it?
All favor sent if I buy an aye?
Aye.
Against? Rules are suspended. What's the council's pleasure?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, ordinance two thousand and sixteen oh five oh five.
I'll second.
We have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huber?
Yes.
Councilmember Rixson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Clemens?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Solomon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drata?
Yes.
The ordinance passes seven zero.
Motion to reinstate the rule.
Second.
All favor with an aye?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it, rules are reinstated. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Good work. Bigger backyards.
It's beautiful, it's just.
Okay, next up is ordinance two thousand and sixteen oh five oh six, an ordinance admitting Article Five Public Works of Crown Point Municipal Club. And I will immediately turn this over to Robert Clemons, who is the chair of the ordinance committee to bring to the council the facts and the determinations by the ordinance committee. Clemons?
Well, Mayor, I would, the recommendation that you, we felt that was, you know, ordered was.
What's the recommendation for the ordinance committee on the, on the wheel tax?
Well, I had it up.
Yes.
The wheel tax. Well, Mayor, I believe it's something that we've talked about. We've, the ordinance committee spent a lot of time on this, we had two meetings on it. You know, Mayor, nineteen years ago, I sit in the same seat when we brought Lake Michigan water in there and we had to make a decision and the people had to get charged for the water. It's five dollars and some odd cents of charge. Or sell the utilities. Well, I find myself nineteen years in another situation here on a wheel tax. So we have to make decisions. With the situation we've got with roads and we listened to your recommendation and this data I got here and the thing with the state and the money that we could get to give us a boost on the roads. I know taxes, people don't like taxes, I don't like taxes. I was up at three o'clock this morning, or six o'clock this morning, walking forward thinking about this. I don't like, I don't like to take money from people, but if we let our streets, our roads, our sidewalks crumble within our feet, the property values of our communities will go down. And the state has gave us a vehicle this time, council, that we can cash in on some revenue that would help us. Now, the second year, that's going to be a whole different situation with us, I think. We can adjust that as we go on with it. But the recommendation from the ordinance committee was to send it up to this council for dialogue with a favorable recommendation to come up here. So, at, at the saying of that, Mayor, we've looked at everything we possibly could look at, alternatives and everything we can see. The biggest thing that I get on my phone calls is streets and roads. I know, I was talking to a street sweeper, he said he has to watch when he goes down the road now, our roads are deteriorating, that that machine will suck up big hunks of asphalt because we can't get to them in time to patch them up. We, our funding is dwindling on us. And the decisions that we make here. And the decisions that we make here is tough ones at times, but we've got to look at the quality of life and for all of the people, not just for a minority. We work with the majority. I know twenty-five dollars seems like a lot of money, but they, we're not asking them to pay any more than what we would pay here in the council. Now, if there's any other alternatives, I would love to hear it, but the recommendation at this time that we move forward with this wheel tax, and the majority of the ordinance committee.
Again, we've had a lot of people come up and speak. Couple were, I don't know if they were for it, but they were certainly against it, and there were so many people that were against the tax, no doubt about it. And I know that if we're going to get on a national soapbox here, we're all struggled on a lot of different fronts. It's happened from Washington. We wish at the local side, when they, as a homeowner, we were happy with the one percent, two percent, three percent. I mean, put a threshold, exactly what your house was worth, you have what it was, and if you wanted something different, you'd come out and you'd talk about things like that. The local option was the other part of the equation of the one-two-three cap. So it took many, many years for the council at the county level to enact, because they were the very last county of ninety-two counties to put that in place. And that was part of the funding formula for the one-two-three cap. We all enjoyed that, put it in the constitution, the Hoosiers voted for that and put it in there, so the, I mean, besides the act of God, you're not going to get it out without a referendum from the community itself, two-thirds vote, and having the Senate and the House to repeal that or reduce that or modify it, that's not going to happen. So we are what we are with the tax, council. And we are what we are with the local option. That's part of the equation, that's how the property taxes were divided. And the cities and towns in northwest Indiana, for many, many years, were, for about seventy years, we were frozen with our living. So the things that we needed to do, or maybe had the opportunity to do in our infrastructure, we were cash grab. We were looking at, and we cut budgets, we cut right as thin as we can go, all right? Then we've switched some things to make it more, less stresses, Greg Garrett's house, we could do things that would make less stress on your general fund. The sports complex, again, I can only emphasize again, without the contributions from the Dana Barber White Foundation, the redevelopment commission, the sports complex would not be where it's at today. This council's a big part of putting that vehicle in place to make that happen. We were able to shift from the parks department, which was near, on a yearly basis, about a hundred thousand of non-reverting revenue, to now over four hundred thousand dollars of revenue, okay? And what we do, we were able to switch a lot of the general fund responsibilities to parks, put that on to the non-reverting side, where employees were switched off, so it was based on user fees coming in, whether you went to the park or not, it was based on people coming in and spending their money here. The revenue came up after paying for the umpires, lights and utilities. We were able to resolve some of the status of employees that normally take care of our twenty-three parks through another resource. We were then able to take that savings and then put that into public safety. When we first came in eight years ago, we had thirty-eight officers, right, chief? We're at forty-six now, okay? Based on our population, we should be around somewhere fifty-five, fifty-six, based on the FBI stats. So we're still chasing that, but we weren't able, we weren't asking for more money from the community, but we were able to shift money and give you more public safety on the road, and do different things with the shifts to put more officers on the street, give protection there, at no rate rise of the tax rate, because we could. Then we were able to also hire more additional for that same savings and work with our budgets. We're a growing community, we had additional money coming in from new homes. We were able to hire more firemen, which is very, very important to you, because now of a fire caller coming nine-one-one, you would have the ability, that first truck coming out on that first call versus having a captain waiting in the truck, waiting for the volunteers to come in and staff it, and those, that was four to five, six minutes before that truck was even ready to go out. That's a huge, huge public safety, quality of life issue for the community. Again, we were able to do that without raising the taxes, because we eliminated what the sources we had. We grew, but we were growing in the right areas. We went out and acquired many, many grants through federal government, brought things back, our intersection improvement projects, you know, where they're a hundred percent paid through federal funds or ninety-ten. We were able to do that to keep those improvements, which are residential and safety concerns to the residents, down. We've been able to do a lot of these different things across the board. We were able to, there was an adjustment on the MVH, so the amount of money that came up into our funding for roads slightly went up. We all heard from Senator Niemeyer, who's still here, that the cost of roads, I'm sure he's heard testimony of, from testimony downstate from hundreds of people that come and talk about their communities and their roads and the infrastructure. This is one of the most hot topics at the legislative level this year, and they have got some attention. They were able to do some things that are not budget year and provide locals for the first time to help themselves. And we've heard the cry from downstate that if you can't help yourself first, don't ask us downstate to do it for you, because there's got to be a partnership involved with that. We're fortunate that, you know, they were looking at the amount of local option that was being collected and saw the surplus get over two billion dollars, that they were able, and that was with local monies across the board, and they were able to give that money back. That's a huge, huge impact coming back to us, nearly seven hundred and some thousand dollars. And because I'm not sure if we received the check yet, but the check's in the mail, as they say, right? And so we're going to get that back. So we budgeted about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars right now on roads for a hundred and thirty-eight miles, and that gives us about, counts about, what, two to three miles if we're lucky to stretch things out?
If we're lucky to stretch it out, yeah.
Okay. It doesn't take much to figure out what three miles does per year in that rotation. How long would it take to get in front of your house if you're on that list? Eight years, we invested money to do what's called the Pacer Program. We had all the roads in the city of Crown Point videotaped inventory and given a master list, so it wasn't cherry picking one road over another. We were given a category of one being the worst by being the best. And we categorized that, and that was pretty much what the list, we'd sit down, unless something would take place where engineering would come back and say, through utilities and streets, that we did some things differently on a road, that we curb cut, we cut in utilities, to do road repairs, and now the integrity of that road has been compromised, some of those things got moved up, and it was the right thing to do at the time. But we did what we did with the money and put it back as much as we can. This is the time, again, nobody wants to raise tax, nobody wants to ask for more, but we've got to maintain our public infrastructure. Few years back when we flooded, we came through the council, we had public hearings, we had outcry from communities, flooding, flooding, flooding. We enacted a stormwater fee, six dollars a household, twelve dollars a parcel for commercial, seventy-two dollars a year for the homeowners, we're putting back into the infrastructure, and we've taken that and we pledged it with other grants. We saw what took place on West Street with the Army Corps. We're seeing that now going on with the Army Corps and another lining project. We were able to take a thirty-eight million dollar mandate from the state that was unfunded, and a judicial order put on us that says you will separate your sewers. And we've done that through a lot of different means, through grants and things, to cut that in half and keep us within range. And we're close to having that be concluded. I can only sit here and go look at the people I work with every day, and especially with Chris and Scott being on here, that I'm sure on the outside looking in now, you've seen the history of over the last many years and how this council has tightened its belts, do more with less, and we've done that, and provided the service that was provided out there. Nobody, we had some heartaches, because, especially in the stormwater, it was because I don't flood. Well, your rainwater goes somewhere, it has to go to somebody's low-lying areas, and we're in this as a community as a whole. So if one house floods, it's the same similar house as yours, your costs would go down because that comp of that house, if you would sell it, appraise it, refinance, want to put money into it, on how we've measured on values of homes, would be compromised. And it was the right thing to do as a community, come together, and we've seen fashion terrorists, we've seen Stillwater, we've seen West Street, we've seen insulated backyards that were property values. We've seen that money to go to right areas for the right purposes, to keep this community strong and vibrant. Now we're asking for the investment of something else that's probably a huge undertaking. And I'm not going to discount that twenty-five dollars is not a lot of money. We've got, it's two dollars a month. It's a cost of one gallon of gas per month on your car. We've heard from people that've got multiple cars, we've heard from people who've got kids that, you know, they don't live here, but they have the car. We've got that across the board. When we presented this ordinance as a tool to the council, we would be unjust not to present this for open discussion, to see if we can get additional money and pledge your money to get additional grant money coming back in to make our infrastructure stronger. Five hundred thousand dollars, six hundred thousand, and with, plus the redevelopment to come on top of that, so we're over a million dollars on roads that can be done. And again, let me preface, redevelopment dollars cannot go to your residential roads and do it unless your benefit is servicing the TIF district. We usually typically use of those areas are the Iowans, the hundred thirteenth that connect into the TIFs, the hundred ninth avenue. So when you see development that's going to go out there for, for commercial opportunities at sixty-five and two thirty-one, sixty-five, hundred and nine, we are going to be pledging those new dollars coming off those new tax ID numbers for the purpose in a TIF to pay for those roads and not have the burden be on our residents. We want to put this money back into your streets where you live. This is the one thing you can see above ground happening around you. All the things we did with the stormwater, you can't see, it's below ground. But we've got success, because there's places that typically flood on a cloudy night with light rain that no longer happen. Now, we're not saying that stormwater plan is completely perfect, because there's some rain events that happen so fast in the ground, there's other circumstances that may cause isolated area floodings, but traditionally, what we're trying to do is make those areas better. That's what we're doing with your roads. If you can't invest in yourself and invest in what you're committing here, and I get it, from the sales tax, from the national level, I get it, this is money that you would be paying, that one hundred percent of that tax would stay in your community, not share with anybody else, like when you pay sales tax, or you do the gas tax. And I'm not sure if a lot of people, the Hoosiers, know that you're a donor state, that ninety-two percent of your tax you collect here stays here, but then you go ahead and donate the rest of that money to the states out east. That's just part of the program that we signed up. So you're not even getting everything you're paying, you're sending it out of your state to begin with, and not keeping it here local. You've got a decision here tonight, begin at least the first step of discussion. Next year, again, with the House bill and the Senate bill, we're going to look at ten one oh one, or Senate Bill sixty-seven, there's a compromise on both sides. That's what the House does with the Senate. They like a little bit here, they don't like it here, they come together, and they don't, they go to a summer committee to figure it out, and then they get presented to the government. This document has given you the ability now to, at least next year, now, if like Senator Niemeyer came up here, we're an advocate of not being double taxed, we've had that conversation, we will not be double taxed. We're going to, we're going to work with the Senate and other senators and our House representatives, so they can fix that for them. If we're the first position, like on a mortgage, we're the first priority. The county comes in second, our money that we collect here stays home and we don't share, and we keep it home. That's our pledge. And if it can't, then we would bring it back to this council to, to look at amendment, to blend, so that doesn't have a huge impact of a double taxation. And you heard the senator himself talk about wanting to lead that charge and make those conversations. That's real conversation, that's not coming for us in wishing that they happen. We're having that dialogue to represent you guys. These roads are much needed, and it's, and they happen faster. Our winters have gotten worse, the undermining of these roads are happening faster. We've got petitions for roads to be done, for neighbors, for whole subdivisions. Mr. Story, you brought in many, many pictures, and we've got those, okay? If we have the dollars and cents in front of us, we're going to reinvest in what you guys put into this Crown Point, reinvest in you, reinvest together, because we're all in this together based on what we can put in the pot. If we decide that this is something the council says that that's not what we want to do, we want to go a different direction, we can still pledge money to the state, but we won't get the full amount that's out there. The number we're hearing is anywhere from five hundred to two million dollars. It's a moving target, we don't know where it's at. And we certainly want to have a position, at least next year, to be in the best position to fully max that out. It'd be great to know that if we got our wheel tax and we were able to get that one additional one point six million, plus our five hundred and seventy, we're at two million dollars, plus what the redevelopment puts in, and plus what we're getting back into that queue from the state this year, we could be at three million next year alone, without any help from the state. But if the two million dollar price tag is something that they're going to match, and you cut the cap off, we could do up to five million dollars. The problem we'd have with that was, can we do five million dollars of roads in one year? And how's the construction going to be? But you'll see huge impact. Will that start catching us up, and then is, do we look at that then and look at their match, and maybe they do some tweak downstate, and they start to give us additional money back? This body has the ability to come back and appeal and reduce. So I think we need to look at, at least year one, the worst-case scenario. And then you can look at all the other sources coming back in, and then look to reduce, or even make the motion, or even have the discussion of guaranteeing maybe a second year of a reduction. So we're going to bank on the fact that we have money coming in, but we're also going to bank on the fact that what our center said, that they're going to fix the formula next year. So you can plan for that as well. But there's one thing we know, is our roads won't heal themselves without being repaired and maintained. And so with that, I know there's going to be a lot of discussion on this, but I want to at least let Bill from engineering, and Greg gave you some handouts too, that was prepared from engineering about what's on the list, what's been in the past, you can see what's been done. Redevelopment has done their part over the last four or five years, okay, investing a lot of money in this. So the taxpayers didn't have to get it, but they got the benefit of the better road on those areas, and we can see those improvements. So before I open it up for you guys, I want, at least, you heard my soapbox, my job is to present the tools to this council, I don't have a vote on this. But I think you hear from where we're at, that we get, we get the calls, and we get them on an everyday basis, and we hear the petitions, but Bill, do you want to go ahead and share some of the things that you've had in your office that presents, because you heard some of the testimony earlier from the residents, and I know you'll be able, on your stuff, will be able to address some of the things. So with that, Mr. Kozlowski, you want to provide your intake and input?
We get a lot of phone calls every day about all different roads in the city. We've got, look at them, we have a lot of roads that, when I mean a lot of roads, we might have fifty or sixty miles of roads that actually need to be replaced, not just resurfaced, but replaced, because the sub-stud face underneath that has been destroyed, rain, cold, freezing, thawing. Been doing one point five million or two million a year, and that's doing maybe five or six roads, and we're going to have twenty years to maybe get to a road. It's a massive undertaking to try to, get everybody's requests yet, to do your roads, you really have so much money. And I work on that list constantly, it changes constantly, it's added to all the time. I add more roads and I take off. The road, everybody's calling about, aren't four or five huge, they really are. We realize that, but it comes down to, we've got to be full of where we're spending our money to make sure we're getting the worst roads, and not just bad roads, but the worst roads. Everybody, I understand everybody feels their road is the worst road, and when you start driving this city and you go into some of the older subdivisions, and you start looking at their roads, and they're all stone, some of the roads, but the paint is gone. So that's a priority in our office, is to take care of that road, because pretty soon, whatever you're redoing the whole road, and it's not going to cost us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's going to cost us five hundred thousand. I live in the city also, so I don't want this tax, not necessarily, but I know the only way this city is going to get a loan is if we do something with this tax. If we don't do it, you guys are going to be calling my office every day complaining about your road for the next twenty years. That's how long this is going to take this city to grow. Well, I got to live here.
Your Honor, if we, if we look at, if we continue the four miles we roughly tried to do, and we got a hundred and thirty-eight miles, it would take us thirty-five years until we made a full turn, which we will be around here in thirty-five years, but we will likely keep the situation going here and have a good road. And then I look at this other one here, four miles of road at the cost of one point eight million, and that's on a short list, the full list would be two point six million. And I looked at the graph that we worked on, that you got here, twenty sixteen proposed two point... two point five million is what we've got proposed for streets and roads this year. On this one here.
Yep. The graphs.
Last year, we did one point five. And that was a long year. On the two twelve, we did, we did under a million. So we can never keep up in it. These other organizations, counties and stuff is growing, getting aggressive with it to try and stop the deterioration of what we've got. If we lose more than what we gained, we're just going to have wheels. So I, if there's a better plan, I would more gladly look and accept it if we could. I understand all of this, but these are hard choices we got to make, and America isn't easy. So Mayor, that's what we, the audience committee, Chad and Mr. Redson here sits on, and if they want to have some dialogue, you guys can go to.
Chad? Yeah. I mean, once again, I mean, nobody sits here and looks at a wheel tax as something that we all just want to jump on. I mean, I think the Senator even mentioned, you know, it would be nice to see the gas tax improved, uh, that way, everybody who's driving through our communities, you know, they've got some skin in the game, they're using our roads, they got some in. But this is a tool that's been given to us this year to work with. You look at any type of survey that's done, your top three priorities in any community, it's schools, infrastructure, and amenities. And, you know, God bless our superintendent and the school board, we've got a good school system. Thanks to Dean White and some things we've done, we've got really nice amenities. We're just having a hard time keeping up with the roads as we stand right now. I would I would echo what the mayor said, that I think this year especially, there is, there's probably a real prime opportunity to maximize the funding that the state is offering. And I think we would probably be, you know, derelict in our duties if we didn't try to capture as much money as we could.
I hate paying taxes. I mean, I promise you that. I pay a very large amount of them, and I feel your pain about the taxes. I have here what I consider a pretty typical property tax bill for a modest three-bedroom house in Crown Point. It's about twenty-seven hundred a year, let's call it. About twelve eighty-eight, that is the school corporation. Oh, let's see, what do we got, six hundred fifty county, library, you get down to the city here, that's about six hundred eighty-six dollars a year that's going to the city of Crown Point out of that twenty-seven hundred dollar bill. Now, that's still sounds like a lot of money, but you divide that out, that's about fifty-five dollars a month. I mean, that's a very, very basic cable subscription, and for that, I mean, we are getting our police and fire and roads and parks and all this other stuff that we're getting done. And I'm a fiscal conservative, and I understand that we need to tighten our belts, and we've done that, and I promise you, we're going to continue doing that this year. But the amount of money that we have to raise to get these roads taken care of is a little more than we can, you know, squeeze out of, I mean, if I could make the mayor go out there on his weekends and fill the potholes to get the job done, if that would do it, I think we would vote to do that, but I don't think that's going to cut it either, so.
I'll pause now, I'll do that.
We we do need a funding, and we do need to spend more on our roads. I think if you look objectively at this, we have to take care of our community. I mean, our federal taxes are brutal, our state taxes are brutal, like the county income tax is brutal, and I'd love to give that money back to you. I don't have that authority, I'd love to give it back to me. But I, you know, and then, as much as I am suffering financially, and we're all suffering financially, I don't want to let my city deteriorate. I care about Crown Point more than I care about, frankly, the other states that we're funding with our taxes, as the mayor mentioned. I mean, this is where I want, this is what I care about most, this is the city I want to take care of, that's why I ran for this office, is I want to take care of this city. And I I definitely hear the pain, and some people will be particularly challenged by this, and I don't know what to say about that. We have to take care of our community. We owe it to you to have this be a safe place to live, to be a nice place to live, to keep your property values up. I mean, letting our town deteriorate because, you know, we're frustrated over our federal, state, and county taxes is just not a sensible thing to do, in my opinion.
Yeah, I've had a lot of calls on this too, all of them in opposition. And a few people have suggested to me, and I know this is an uphill battle, but I think we need to tackle a different issue before we even recommend it. And that issue is the illegal Illinois license plates. I know it's an uphill battle, but it's bad.
You see the real tax?
The state cops sits in front of, please, just pick the one.
The only legal ones are the ones that are company vehicles.
Did you see the Illinois, uh, wheel tax being proposed was four hundred fifty dollars a car? Or you could opt to have a tracking device in your car to tax you, what, two cents a mile or something? That might stop that.
It's a bad issue, it's a bad issue.
Don't take care of that for us.
Scott, you done?
Yes, yes, yeah, Chris, interrupt. No, I'm just kidding, I'm done.
Uh, one of my issues had to do with, um, you know, Indiana residents who have cars plated in other states. I would need to be convinced that there'd be better enforcement of that, because, um, the only, the only call I've gotten in favor of this wheel tax was somebody who was very enthusiastic about it, and then I realized they don't live in the city limits, so they wouldn't even pay it. So, you know, we're all for better roads, I realized they've got to be paid for. I would want to see, um, you know, how do we, how do we handle that? If there's no county tax, but a lot of our, a lot of people using our roads are, you know, out of the city limits, it's Winfield, Plaques Four Seasons, it's, um, and I love that, you know, we want people to come in and use the community, but I feel like we're a little, um, there's a fairness issue there that I'm I'm a little concerned about. And, um, so those unincorporated areas not having the same burden and yet using the same roads, for the most part, concerns me, where, and I, and I get the problem, you know, I mean, we've been set up here doing budgets for years, and I get the problem. The only thing that is positive about this would be the matching funds from the state. You know, anytime you can spend a dollar to get two, or spend a dollar to get a dollar kind of thing. But I'm, I'm really struggling with this one, I'm really struggling with this one. Being so local, when we are, it's, it's, it's the trucks that are tearing up my road, and they're not even registered in Crown Point, so I'm struggling with this one.
Just want to get the facts, the, what we got from the B and B, again, this, this is from the legislative services, they haven't completely vetted out, and it could be plus or minus whatever they are. There's fifty-four thousand cars registered in Crown Point that's eligible for this tax. These are passenger cars, and six thousand commercial vehicles, so not every commercial entity that's out there is circulating the system and going all the way or not being. So there's six thousand car or large vehicles, over eleven thousand pounds, that are registered in this equation, so. And again, they've got to be vetted out to make sure that they're within the areas of the city limits and stuff like that, and we're going to be working with, if it's passed, we have to work and make sure those are all validated and corrected, and make sure that they're city residents. You know, Scott, I don't disagree, I know the chief gets calls all the time about Illinois plates, uh, to think that it is an issue, to think that's going to be the, the, the one that tips us across the board for the roads, it's probably, it's probably a drop in a big bucket, that's, but every drop counts, there's no doubt about that, they'll be able to disconnect that as well. We do welcome people that don't live in Crown Point to Crown Point, because they support our businesses, and, but if they use our amenities, we do charge them a surcharge, so they pay extra. So what it costs you as, uh, somebody that signed up for a Crown Point community parks program, uh, there is a increase for somebody who's outside of Crown Point that uses it, so we charge them more, because typically, you're the ones through property tax dollars or any other sources of TIF or whatever, or business dollars that are collected, are paying for these amenities. We want to make sure if they're coming here, we do try to extract additional because their backyard doesn't have it. And, and then they stop and buy their, uh, you know, they shop here, they eat here, you know, let's keep our businesses collectively going, so that's the circle of life. And we, we see the tourism that takes place, it's worth it, but nearly three quarters of million people going through it on a yearly basis that we can't quantify, because you see the Boom Groves who live outside the city at BW threes, you see the, you know, I mean, so those are things that make the Monday through Thursday nights more valuable for the businesses, so I, I agree, I used, I mean, I don't want to get another tangent about, you know, who pays what, and from the schools to the this and that, it makes sense. And Chris, I appreciate you bringing that up, because a lot of people think that the one checkbook that they do pay comes to the city and then we pass it out, that's not the case at all. And I am proud to say that when I did look at my tax bill for Crown Point, especially the municipality side we brought up earlier, our percentage was trending down, it went down. And that's a testament to the council for doing the things you talk about, and repopulating dollars, and we grew. We hired three, uh, chief, four more, fired, hired another police officer, and your taxes went down.
Um, well, I just wanted to address and thank Senator Neimeyer for coming, and I strongly ask you to raise the tax on the gas. I think that takes care of the city getting money back, it's equitable, the big semis that rip up the road are getting a lot of gas in those tanks, and I think that's equitable and that's not unreasonable, and I think that's something you need to take care of. So I would ask you to look at that. The other thing is, with everybody else, um, our job as a council is to provide the best service for the best value, and that's what we were all elected to do, and we have got to take care of our roads. But I understand the financial crisis everybody is in, so I think you have to negotiate and both come to the table in good faith. And come to the table in good faith means nobody goes home with everything they want, but we all go home with something. So my suggestion would be, um, because I want to maximize the dollars, that this year everybody would ask for twenty-five dollars per car. After that, to put it written in the ordinance, then the price would then come down to, let's say, fifteen dollars, and the twenty-five won't stay. And I would approve something with that's written in the ordinance, because sometimes that tax is there and it just doesn't go away, it just keeps, you know, going and going, so it's got to be put, a stop to it. And so that would be reasonable to me, that I think I want the most money for our city. So I think this year, it's reasonable to say, can everybody kick in twenty-five dollars per car, but then after that, let's do it to fifteen per car, and then let's see what the state can give us, and I hope that you raise those, um, gas taxes, because I really think that's equitable, and it affects, everybody coming into the city is paying for the use of the roads, if we get money back on that. So in that sense, I think I could support it if we could, again, make sure that next year it is not twenty-five dollars, and it's after that.
Andrew.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I, I think that Councilwoman Draz does, uh, recommendation has some merit. I would want to see financial analysis to see where we would be, whether it's ten, fifteen, twenty, or twenty-five in year two, three, and down the road. At the end of the day, we're, we're elected, we take an oath to represent our communities, to listen to our constituents, and then to be prudent financial advisors. The, uh, the match is a, is a big item, it's a, it's the, it's a, it's a great enhancement, and it's not something that we should look over. I've been walking my neighborhoods, uh, not because I want to care about the wheel tax, because of, like, all my other colleagues, I've not had anybody supporting that, but I was just walking my neighborhoods, and roads are, are one of the top three items. And, uh, and they, they say, Andrew, when you're going to fix my road, they think I'm going to fix it.
There you go, Chris.
Our constituents have an incomplete understanding of how the system works, but that's another topic for another day. So even the, I, myself, I live in a private development, so my road, I would be paying for a road that, uh, that I, that is not included. At the same time, the main road in our subdivision was just done three years ago, and needs to be done again. So I, when I see this list here, I'm almost embarrassed to go out walking again and to talk to these people and say, you know, you're not even on the list, and I don't know when it's going to happen. So I, I think there's a way we can make this a win-win situation to make it more palatable, so that it's, 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 uh, it, it works for everybody. What else did I want to say? Oh, I would also ask our, because it's, it's a legitimate concern, two things, I would ask our financial analysis expert, Greg, to, to look at that proposal, and also to look at our current budget. Is there something that, that, I know we, we work through budget real closely, but is there something that we're missing? Is there something, because when I'm out there saying, well, can't you take it from another fund? Well, right when I'm out walking, I don't have all that data in my head to, to reply, but maybe we need to, to, to look at that to make sure, to, to give that, that second opinion. Is there something that, that, that we're missing that, that we could also take from? And then I would encourage my constituents, I would encourage all the city residents to attend their school board meetings, their Lake County Council meetings, their library board meetings, and where, where there's miss, uh, not, I don't want to say, where there's funds that could be used in a better way, uh, to better enhance, to be more financially efficient, we should be talking to those bodies too, to say, you know, why, that, why are you spending this money there? We're only, like we said, twenty-four percent. The county and, uh, school board are, are higher percentages, and are we attending those meetings and asking for, uh, financial, uh, financial data and, and analysis from them? So, um, so, so me too, it's, it's a struggle, and it should be for all of us, a struggle, shouldn't be just saying, you know, if we're fine, let's do it and, and get it done. But there's ways, I think, we can make it more palatable.
Senator, I know you stuck around for this, or is there anything you would like to add to the council, or is nothing changed, that, again, you're going to roll your sleeves up and go to bat and, and, one, protect double taxation, and two, you know, you've heard from your, your colleagues down there that next year is going to be a, a strong year for, uh, additional dollars for, for infrastructure. And again, you guys got to maintain the interstates, uh, you know, you, you took the state police off the MBH, which was good, so you put more money in the roads, that was a, a shift of dollars. But, I mean, you've got, besides locals coming down, you've got people who drive through I sixty-five and all the other interstates that I think we all agree that drives on sixty-five and go to other states that we're woefully behind in that infrastructure.
Well, one thing you don't like to hear, Mayor, is a lot of people tell you they know when to get to Indiana, because the roads get better, get worse.
You know where you're in Wisconsin, because the roads get great.
You know, and you get, you're right, you get pressure, you get, you get the county, you get the municipalities, you got the state, and, uh, the reason I stuck around tonight was to listen to what alternative things that you may need to look at. The next year is going to be a big session, there's going to be a lot of dialogue, a long session, the four-month session, it's going to start early on in January, and that dialogue's going to stay to April, before they finally get a form, and I think it's going to look, look for transportation, and it's going to be very interesting. And the locals have a big play in it, because as a state senator, that's how we get elected, from our locals. We might represent the state, we have to do what's good for the whole state of Indiana, but the locals represent us, the local people represent, the people vote for us, so we look back home at what we need to do locally, and I think that's what you see in this session. We knew we had to do something in a non-budget year to get more money back in transportation, and we did. Whether you agree with it a hundred percent or not, it's there, and it, and it's putting money back in. We talk about looking at, gentlemen, Mr. He said, talking about the pool of money, it's just like that income tax money, that fifty percent holdback we had, I had no idea that was there, that we were holding back fifty percent. And we looked at that and said, well, why don't we just hold back thirteen percent of that money and, and get that other money to the, to the municipalities and the county? And that's what, that sixty-seven, seventy, sixty-seven did, and that was finding money that was there, that belonged to the locals, didn't belong to us, and we were holding back too much. So those are the things why I'm here tonight, listening, and, uh, and do a dialogue, and appreciate you asking me out.
Yeah. Just one more thing, I, I did want to say, for those of you who stuck around, anytime the public's involved, we really appreciate that. You know, there are a lot of things we do up here and we never hear from anybody, and then we find out later, somebody's unhappy or, you know, whatever with it. So I appreciate those of you who came out tonight on behalf So I appreciate those of you who came out tonight on behalf of the council. We do listen to what you say, not just phone calls, but the people who show up. It does matter to us. So thank you.
One question here. I talked to Senator Niemeyer a few minutes back here. And I asked him, what happened to the money that was from the lottery, you know, the state, you know? And it was supposed to go to education and also for roads. And he said they had to allocate that to something else, right?
Well, what I spoke to him about was, I think we all know it, I was in downstate at that time, and no 7, 08, 09, when the tough times hit. To see what happened to some of our adjacent states would happen. Indiana used to try every resource they had to balance their budget out without raising taxes and going in the red. That's it. That's a place to look in the new formula. Where is that lottery money going?
Yeah, I mean, people are spending a lot of money on lottery.
I appreciate your comment on that. It's a place to look and see what's happening with all that money from the lottery.
And that's year after year, too. And it's supposed to go to the schools and to the roads.
Also to bring up since you brought lottery, and just let you know that we do receive additional revenue for casino money. Our portion, which is not as large as the big three on the North End, which is Hammond, Gary, and East Chicago, because they get to keep the lion's share of their lottery. But we do share a revenue stream of that. And the council worked with us almost eight years ago. And we pledged with our, and bonded for $1.8 million road funding and put that towards it. And it's a 15-year bond. Because at the time, we knew that the prices were rising with the gas prices and oil were going up. We put $1.8 million into that 2008, 2009 paving season. And we got a lot of bang for our buck back then. But that was one year. Now we're taking the revenue to pay that bond back. And the interest that we're paying on that is money that we can't put back in our road. So now we're asking for, to take cash on hand and pay as we go, so we're not taking interest in having that waste and giving it to somebody else. We're keeping 100 percent of the dollar a year. It's appropriated, whatever that amount may be. I think what Carol and I hear from the council, I think we all agree that we've got to come up with a formula that at least pushes the envelope to an improved state of how we're approaching our roads. And hearing from the engineers, you know, from what's on the docket, even if we get the full max for next year and get the match, and we have construction everywhere, which we're going to receive the phone calls because you can't drive anywhere, it's still not going to be enough to do what we need to do going forward. So we've got to have that continuous additional revenue come in, whether it's 25 first year and we reduce it down to a more comfortable. And again, I don't want to use the word comfortable because it's a comfort level. For everybody's different. But it's, you'll see what's happening around you. You'll see the feel of the community getting stronger. You'll see the value go up in other areas, which if the property values go up because we improve our infrastructure, the 1 percent, 2 percent, 3 percent will be stronger to this body. Then you can start to look to reallocate those dollars and do, then populate it somewhere else and soften that blow. But you're still going to have police, you're still going to have fire, you're going to have amenities, the things we talked about on that price. And we, as a community, grow and get stronger. The school money's going to get stronger as well. The county money is stronger because they extract from that as well. As Chris articulated very well, that we're a small portion of those dollars. But we hold the lion's share of the development to make those things happen.
On that topic, another question we asked during our ordinance committee meeting, which I guess was another topic that was asked about earlier, which we didn't get to, is the master asset plan. It's giving us a number on what will it take? How much should we be spending to maintain these roads every year?
And we're going to have that as part of the requirement to get the match. We have, one of our GIS employees went through the master training through LTAP last week. That's going to take and collaborate the current documents we have through the PAST program from eight years ago. Go through the working documents and the visual applications. They go out, you're going to inspect every road, measure from, you know, X to Y, you know, grade them once again, put them in the asset management plan. The asset management plan, is it a re-mill? Is it just a crack in seal? Is it a complete rehab from, you know, from curves to gutters? And the curves are a big part of it too, because of the infrastructure of our groundwater, because that's where the water needs to be and we have to convey it through. So we're just not going to go in and leave pummeled curves and put new asphalt out because we're just buying that bandage. It's going to take three years and all of a sudden your road gets bad again. You've got to do the complete rehab of the infrastructure itself, from curbs, aprons, and things that are going to be possible there. So you're going to have all that data before the public hearing. We're going to have that data to be able to share. But even with that data, we're going to give you, and it could be a passionate discussion about the data where it needs to go. Bill, am I correct by saying that even with that battery bill, what we're collecting, still won't support the complete maintenance of all the infrastructure of the city based on the numbers we're talking about?
No, we're close.
So we're going to provide that for you. And it's going to give you some, you know, talking points to show where we're at and where we're going to be at. And hopefully we'll have maps to be able to show, here's the roads that we can do. This would be the forecast that would be in 16 years, what you'd do in four years, and do that map. And again, this is not a, this is not a political statement for anybody up here. This is not politics. This board is, and I'm proud to say that, some of the popular things we get from people that come to these committees and residents who come to these meetings, that people don't look at ours and these up here because you don't see that. It's about good, health, passionate conversation about the community. And we all might all have our passions differently and where we focus on, but at the end of the day, the politics stance and the letter by the name has never been an issue up here. And I'm proud to say that that's part of the case because they make us pick a letter. If they would do it like the schools and be bipartisan, that'd be even better. Because I think it's, we're up here for one thing, by our community. Nobody's here looking for a higher office to balance themselves based on a stance that's coming from a higher, that's, I haven't seen that. And nor do I think anybody else has. And I don't think why we raised our right hand, we took the old, it was for the community itself that we elected.
As I said before, I've worked with two different councils, and this one here is very diversified. And it does its homework. And we do what we've got to do to make quality of life happen and the best of our ability.
I appreciate Mr. Senator Niemeyer being here today to give us the, the Senate's perspective from the state. And it's good to hear that they're going to roll their sleeves up and hopefully take some of the heavy lifting that's taken here tonight off our shoulders. So some of the compromising appearing up here could be something that could be long-term. And we can fill those gaps with multiple sources covered in Crown Point, besides just the backs of our residents themselves. But in order to get there, we have to begin to decide, and Mr. Nipples, is there a way that, because there is a recommendation from the ordinance, that what's to discuss could be amended tonight and be put in so people leaving here can have a sense of where the direction of the council is going?
If the council would care to state their amendments, you know, in size form, I will prepare whatever document needs to be prepared for the approval. So you have a, you know, an ordinance in front of you. If you would say to me what you would wish.
Well, I'd like to make a motion with this ordinance, I think the.
You want a time limit, a complete review next year, right?
Right.
Okay, that can be accomplished.
Right. And to start with $25 per car, the other vehicles, I would leave the same price.
For 40?
Mm-hmm. And then we would put down $15 in here for the following years and just go from there.
What about the other 40? Does that could reduce the percentage would be 25 with this complete reduction of calculation across the board? So it'd be 15, 25?
Mm-hmm.
15, 25 next year.
Is that a formal motion?
Yeah, is that. Yeah. And then we'll have discussion on that, if anybody felt a difference in the price.
So you're making a formal motion with a formal title only, a formal sucker reading. We need a second to have a discussion. Now we can have a discussion.
What's everyone's thought on?
Bobby, I'm the chair of the ordinance committee. I know that you, Chad, and Chris have done a lot of work, not the city, the rest of the council, but the ordinance committee. How do you feel about the amendment that's been presented for discussion here?
The ones, the ones, Carol, we just, I think that's, I think that's, that's meeting people halfway. And as far as I talk to my ordinance people that I, that we work with, and they don't have any objection at this time. Unless, Mr. President, do you have an objection?
No, I think it's a sensible approach. Chad?
No, I think Carol makes a good point that, you know, we brought something to the table to be transparent, that this is as high as it can possibly be. You know, it's actually a great idea. Let's try and maximize our money this first year. Let's put it in there to bring it back down to something more palatable for the second year. And, you know, and each year, take a look at that, kind of review it as we go as we can. I think it's a, I think it's a really sensible compromise.
Because we may find that something comes from the state, we hope, that may change the complexion of this whole thing. And then we want to be able to reevaluate that tax on an annual basis because perhaps the state will give us more money or a better tool or something like that. We can always then reevaluate it.
You heard it from the senator himself tonight, that he's going to take up his side. That's the Senate side. And I have heard from, you know, Senator Soliday, that they're not done on their side coming forward. So that's, that's, that's good dialogue discussion that's going to come across the board on fair and equitable things back to locals. And I think this is a good compromise, good blend. Again, I brought the tools to you to figure out, you know, and this is worth the fighting, is you have the role. I don't have the role here, but.
Old Robert over there.
Yeah, somebody upstairs. So you never know. Thanks, Andrew, but, I mean, I can live with this, knowing that the phone calls that we got. And I agree with Carol on this, that we all walk away with something that is better than we thought we were walking to, whether it's good, better, different. And I think next year is a huge year because we have to have this done. And again, that's the rules that were given to us, that we have to have this in place by June 30th in order to be able to maximize that full amount, which is the highest amount in 2017. And then 16, or then 18, it gets blended back down. But then we'll know legislation next year that our legislators, who promised that they're going to look at this, can fill the gap in. And then you can reevaluate it going forward to know what that gap is. And hopefully have the provision out there that if we're first position in Lake County, that if the county does pass, that we're not being double taxed. And I think that's positive language.
Do we have a date for this review? Do we have a time?
Well, I think what time is that they give us the money, it's 2017.
January 1st, 2017, they begin to collect the tax. And that's when you get paid. And they pay you based on, I believe, Senator, is quarterly distributions just like it is everything else?
I'm not sure, Mayor. I think so, but I'm not sure.
That's how the local options, quarterly. Christie, correct?
Right.
So they'll collect the first quarter. You'll get your first payment until April from the first quarter. If it goes on, you chase the quarters. Like you said, you're in your wiers of the payment.
So the first review of the ordinance in December of 2017?
Well, I would look, if it come back sometime after their session, which would be in the April next year.
Tools are.
Well, I'm just saying, do we build this into?
The council can review at any time, you know.
Okay.
Right. Just takes two years to put it on there and sponsor the bill for amendment. So you've got that vehicle in control.
And then that's up to, I mean, any House member of the ordinance committee could spear it about.
What Carol said was, the first year exactly as it's stated in the ordinance now. Second year, cars 15, trucks 25, with a yearly review.
So it's going to be on the agenda, the rules?
That was my question, is will it be automatically on the agenda where we expected to?
Is that, Bob, Scott, Chris, is that, I mean, it's going to be on the agenda, so it doesn't have to take a topic up to have somebody present it. It's going to be on, you know, probably the fiscal, fall of the fiscal year, July of next year, we'll bring it right back and have a review. You know, the more information we get, we can bring it back.
Mayor, do we know, I know that we brought this up at ordinance committee, and I don't know since the senators here. But, you know, we had Todd here from Center Township, I think Laura brought it up with Winfield Township and Senator. Is outside of city limits, the townships, do those fall then if the county would impose? Or do they have an option of somehow imposing themselves?
Well, my understanding with Senator, you want to address is that if the city of Crown Point is addressing and passing a wheel tax for its residents, that you're going to fight for us to be first position on our dollars and our dollars only. If somebody lives in Center Township, unincorporated Crown Point, which doesn't pay into ours, but the county invokes their tax, then those residents would be paid to county because they would be maintaining the county roads.
If you pay the county only and the money portion goes to the county, I mean, there's a, whoever, if you're still in first position, you just will be taken out of the county's distribution because your residents would not be paying in, they'd be paying in on your own rate. So they wouldn't be paying in on the county level. If that's the legislation you're looking at to take them out. And you have the other option you have, if the county does a county income tax or a wheel tax, they didn't have to, a wheel tax. You can look and see what's better for you. You know, you wouldn't have to have both. You can drop yours if the county ever does it. You know, there's an option there for you. I don't know what that formula would bring in for you on a county. Like I said before, when they did it in 2011 on a county council with $10 million, eight million to one municipality based on their population, and then two million to one county, from the unincorporated people that were paid in, like the Center Township people that paid in, that would stay in the unincorporated area. So, I mean, you'd have options there. I mean, if the county did do a tax, if it's, if it's still in your court and say legislation did not get done of saying which way you wanted to stay for your residents, I don't know that, you know? Because you could only drop yours. It's like you talked about downsizing it down tonight and looking, seeing what it brings in and what it makes of the future. Because what you don't know, and I like that amendment, because you don't know what's going to happen next session of what kind of, it might be worse. It might be something you're not getting extra money. And if you might not have your microphone, it's not bringing out what you think you need to stay with this wheel tax to do it. Or it might be something we can look at downgrading it and not know that need as much. So I think it's a good start if you're looking at bringing in what you, look at it every year because it could change. And if the county does it, let's say the legislation doesn't get passed, and I'm getting a draft that would exempt out. But I'd say it doesn't happen because the idea of the whole legislation was, senators knew out there, there were 60-some counties already with the wheel tax inside your county. This was another way to get more revenue if the city and town wanted to do it inside here because there was a lot of, there was, two-thirds of the counties already had the wheel tax. So they, they knew that when this legislation was passed. And I think that's why they had the $20,000 that started there, that they were just going to kind of really exempt it, really, you know, it'd be $20,000 or more. But then some senators started complaining, not complaining, but saying, my whole district doesn't have the city or town $20,000. So none of my cities or towns, my whole senate district can do this. So then they dropped it back down, they dropped it down to $10,000 to bring more in. And like I said, Newton and Benton County, I don't have a town or city that brings in that. But in Lake County, I have five. Because, you know, Sherrville, St. John's, Cedar Lake, Crown Point, and they all bring it in, they'll go to $10,000. So I think it's a, it's a approach you want to be careful with what you're doing. Because if you do it, you want to stay home, you want to be for your, and that's what, I don't, you know, and I'm going to say this. When the county tax came up, the XX tax, even as a Republican, I was, I was looking at it pretty hard at the time because everything was happening. We didn't have the income tax at that time, which I never supported on the council either, but it's another issue. But it was an answer to the money we weren't getting. And, but again, when that night that vote came up and there wasn't, there wasn't all this gathering of elected officials to back up what we were going to do, it took my vote to no quickly because I wasn't going to be caught out there with not the backing of the cities and towns because they needed to get into this. And again, it might have been done wrong. It came up fast. I don't know how much information cities and towns got in 11 that we were doing, trying to do a county wheel tax. But I think there's a lot of options in this, in this bill that allows you to keep it, don't use it, downsize it. You know, there's a wide range of what you can charge.
Thank you. If the motion can consider, I think the appropriate date for the review would be the first council session in May.
Should that be after the.
Because you, well, it's after that, but you have to have your, that gives you two readings. It gives you a May reading and a June reading. And you have to make your changes in order to have for the following calendar year by June 30th of that year. So like the things we're doing now puts it in place for 17. So like the things we're doing now, puts it in place for 17, if the council decided because the funding formula was changed and you wanted to reduce or change that amount. If you had it adopted, and because of his fees, so you'd have to have two readings and I could suspend the rules. You would have in a position to send documentation to the BMV to the state for 18 to have the changes in place, whatever that change may be. So that would be consistent, always in the agenda on May to be a wheel tax.
Officially, then we can look at it at any time, but our official review would be in May.
Yeah, that way it falls. So for the purpose of the retitle, would you make those amendments to your?
I will make that amendment to my motion.
Do we have a second to that?
I will.
Original second?
Yes. So it's the reduction in the amount, the annual review to be one, to be on the date.
May council.
You got that, David?
I got it.
Any other discussion? Okay, then we got it now. So we need to move this thing forward. We've still got a work ahead of us. All in favor, signify by an eye?
Aye.
Against?
No.
The ayes have it. Thank you, council. All right. Lost my gem here. Uh, next up is ordinance 2016-05-07.
I'll move to read in title only, hold over for a second reading, 2016-05-07.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second open for discussion? Hearing not all, fair to signify by an eye?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. If you want to suspend the rules, you're off the agenda.
Sure. I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All in favor of that eye?
Aye.
Against? The rules are suspended?
Move to approve, 2016-05-07.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not, call the roll, please.
Councilor Boris?
Yes.
Councilor DeRice?
Yes.
Councilor DeRice?
Yes.
Plammet?
Yes.
Councilor McCarroll?
Yes.
Councilor Leonard Solomon?
Yes.
Councilor Lou Dessa?
Yes.
The board has passed a 7-0. Thank you, council.
And state the rules.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor with an eye?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. We'll go right to miscellaneous matters and Diana, special events.
Thank you. May 5th is the National Day of Prayer. It will take place on the east side steps at 12:00 PM on the courthouse. And May 7th will be the Little League and Girls' softball parade at 9:00 AM. Will be setting up our device throughout the year. May 12th, the carpool season will begin. And May 30th is the Memorial Day Parade at 10:30 AM. For the 11 o'clock ceremony at Maplewood Cemetery.
On that Memorial Day, if you're interested in being a part of the parade, let Diana know so we can make arrangements. We use it to control, welcome the council, be on there. Go to the Maplewood and we recognize the elected officials from the city who would want to attend. It's a very nice ceremony that's put on by the American Legion. With that being said, with Memorial Day, I know Scott wanted to bring up a topic. And I think it's really sparking off the things that we've had from the First United Methodist Church on recognizing our wounded warriors and our military. And Scott, you want to kind of bring this idea to the table?
Yes. I was contacted by the Idowski family, which most people here know. Nicholas Idowski died. June 21st of 2005, he was a dear friend of mine, dear friend to the whole family. I was contacted by them to get in touch with the people from rememberourfallen.org. Every state takes a 50-foot wall that is put together. And it is of all the, all the soldiers that have died since, since 9/11 from that state. It is a touring photo display and honors all Indiana's military who have died from wounds suffered in that war zone since September 11. It's 50-foot long. The location is set up, we have talked about, First United Methodist Church, if they're okay with that. Takes them one hour to set up. And it would be here, hopefully, Wednesday, October 26th, Wednesday to November 2nd, Wednesday. It is a cost of $800 only. And that money all goes toward wounded warriors.
With the, you know, the $800, would it be appropriate to, if we want to split from the mayor's office and the council's promotion to city, to pay for that? That's what the council will choose.
That's fine.
Shall we just make that a formal motion?
Yep.
A motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
A second? All in favor of that eye?
Aye.
Against? Okay, so that we can get the funding and the other claims, we understand where that's coming from and the claims. I think it's good. And, you know, we just had the last Board of Works to talk about and Scott had a good conversation about this. Mark Wilkins, the pastor for First United Methodist Church, has came to the Board of Works. And he's got a complete salute to a program for our wounded and lost lives of our veterans. And there's going to be Operation Green Light going on in October, so in November, so maybe we can get for the police, we can have green lights. So they're setting up a charity football game, which are military people, veterans from Nippsville and church. They're going to raise funds out of sportsplex. There's a Halloween scare bash that they're putting on. There's a lot of money being raised. And when Scott brought the story up, I think the timing of this is going to be just adding to the recognition and remembrance of people that have the ability for us to have our freedoms in our, in our country today. So sometimes we get caught up in some of the other things alike, whether it's a road or not. But we really need to look at the people who provide us the ability to have those healthy discussions in a public setting. So thank you for bringing it to our attention, Scott. Any other business that needs to come in from the council today? We all talked up.
Excuse me, ma'am, I have a question. Just wanted to make sure, because your phone came in quick on the end. Did we cover the subscriptions?
Yes.
Yes.
And you did, okay, that was the final thing. Okay, I thought that was.
That was Andrew going very quick at that one. He ripped that one out, so.
I just wanted to make sure that was down.
Yes. That being said, if there's other business, do we have a motion to adjourn? Do we have a second? All in favor of that eye?
Aye.
Against? If you want to stay? Counsel.